Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Edwards, Mayor of Temecula, and I welcome you to this city council meeting, and so I'm going to call this meeting to order. This evening, we have with us Deacon John Gabriel of St. Catherine's of Alexandria Church, who's going to offer our invocation, and that will be followed by the flag salute, and I will lead the flag salute. So if you could please stand for the invocation. Deacon John, how are you?
Doing very well. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks.
We're going to stand up for your invocation and followed by the flag salute, so feel free to go ahead.
Great. So I want to say, you know, Mary Ann, Matt, Zach, Stu, Jessica, you know, leadership requires two virtues, right? Honesty and courage. We seem very simple until it becomes inconvenient. You know, all of you guys have earned the trust here this evening by winning the trust of the people here in Temecula. You know, with that honor comes the duty of humility and integrity. So tonight, let's let us settle our hearts and begin this meeting the same way that we should always strive to live our lives, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. God, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity of these fine council members that they have to serve our people in our city. Help them to act with character, Lord, and conviction. Help them listen with understanding, Lord, and goodwill. Lord, we ask that you help them speak with charity and restraint. Give them the spirit of service. Lord, I ask that you remind them that they are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be leaders that your people of this city need. Help them to see the humanity and the dignity of those who disagree with them, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or how poor, Lord, with the reverence that they deserve. And finally, Father, renew them with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Deacon John.
You're welcome.
Could you please put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, and you may be seated. Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander, here. Mayor Edwards, here. Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
And Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
So we're going to move on to presentations and proclamations, and we have a special guest with us this evening. We're going to give a proclamation for Conservation Appreciation Month to Rihanna Fisher from WRCOG, and that's Western Riverside Council Government. Rihanna, how are you?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Edwards. I'm great. Thank you for asking, and thank you for having RCHCA. My name is Rihanna Fisher. I'm the program manager for the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency. We're responsible for protecting and conserving habitat for the endangered Stevens kangaroo rat in Western Riverside County, and this year, we are celebrating our 25th anniversary. We have done a lot of great things during this time, including a recent proposal from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to downlist the species from endangered to threatened, which represents success in increasing its population and protecting its species, which we will continue to do indefinitely. So what we're asking this proclamation to do is commemorate May as Conservation Appreciation Month. Our open spaces are so important, and we want to be able to continue to appreciate the importance of nature in our communities. So we're very happy to accept this proclamation, and we also like to invite you all to look at our website, which is rchca.us. There will be activities going on throughout the month of May in support of Conservation Appreciation Month. So on behalf of RCHCA, thank you to the City of Temecula for the proclamation.
Well, you're welcome. And hold on a minute. I've gone off screen here. Here we go. So Randy, do I have a copy of the proclamation? Is it in with everything I'm supposed to be signing?
You should have it there in front of you, and it just so happens that I also have it in front of me.
All right. I'm looking with, I'm looking here at my agenda and my script. I don't see it, which is, it isn't here.
So if you would like, Madam Mayor, happy to go ahead and recite a couple of these whereas clauses?
Yes, I would love that.
Whereas the Stevens kangaroo rat was listed as an endangered species in October 1988 by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and is endemic to Western Riverside County and Northern San Diego, California. And whereas the City of Temecula joined the Joint Powers Agreement, creating the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency. And whereas in 1996, the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency was formed for the acquisition, administration, operation, and maintenance of land and facilities for ecosystem conservation and habitat reserves for the Stevens kangaroo rat and endangered or threatened species. And whereas the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency is celebrating its 25th anniversary in 2021, the agency is proud of its achievements in species recovery, making Stevens kangaroo rat a candidate for downlisting and several milestones, such as the region's first-ever public access plan on conserved lands, establishment of a comprehensive range-wide management and monitoring plan, implementation of adaptive management, and its support of community involvement through volunteerism and educational outreach. Whereas the City of Temecula supports and appreciates the Stevens kangaroo rat habitat conservation plan, this ambitious environmental effort provides a pathway to balance wildlife conservation and conserving the species and the ecosystem they depend on while streamlining the permitting process to support economic development. Now, therefore, you, as the Mayor, Mary Ann Edwards, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 to be Conservation Appreciation Month.
Thank you, Randy. And I happen to have here my little kangaroo rat on my desk. And honestly, rat does not describe this animal. It's very, very, very cute, and I don't think it's fair that it was called a rat. And it has a very long tail with a little wispy thing on the end. And I have been on RCHCA for, I couldn't tell you how long, 12 years. I was off for a year or so, and then, and then went back. So we have seen this go from an endangered species to something that we're about ready to delist, working with fish and wildlife. So thank you, RCHCA and the team. It's a remarkable body of work, because it does not happen very often that something is delisted. So that's a real, that's a real feather in your cap. So.
Thank you so much, Mayor Edwards.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Edwards. I just want to say, you know, that this, this has been a journey. And, and when you think about the 25 years that all of our member jurisdictions have been involved with this species, and it's crazy, because I look at the council, and almost all of you have served on the RCHCA board. You know, James Stewart, Councilmember Stewart, served with us, supported our educational outreach, has been a champion for Stevens kangaroo rat and for this plan. Councilmember Matt Ron has served and just really pioneered, you know, some of the efforts. And Mary, and Mayor, I have to kiss him in right?
That's okay. I'm family.
You are, I know. And it's just, it's just so apropos, and I'm just so proud and glad and grateful to have been a part of this agency and to have been a part of this sort of, I see it like a relay. And so you guys, you know, laid that foundation and then passed that baton to folks like myself and Brian Shomo, where we are now passing the baton to your new program manager, Rihanna Fisher, that's of the RCHCA, and those who'll come after us to see this thing all the way through. And so it's just been an excellent journey. I thank you so much for your support. I know you're going to hear, you know, some tremendous things that we're working on now. With, with, with Councilmember Ron's support, we've worked to establish this range-wide management and monitoring plan. So we're working across, you know, San, Northern San Diego County, military establishment, et cetera. We wouldn't be able to do those things had it not been for your leadership. And so I'm just really grateful. And I know that you being in the hands of Rihanna and Brian Shomo, you guys, everything is going to be great, and they're going to continue this legacy. So thank you so much.
Well, Princess, you've played such a huge role in it, and we had a great time in Sacramento. It's really fun to go to Sacramento with Princess, because she makes such a great impression on everybody at Fish and Wildlife. And we did have a great time, and they were astounded at the results of, you know, the conservation of the species that we've done. And it's a remarkable, a remarkable achievement that just doesn't happen very much. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Councilmember Stewart, you've got an SPR coming your way, sir.
Yeah. Hey, and you know what? If anybody would like to go to the reserve, and if we could get Brian to take us and do a nighttime observation, they're nocturnals. It's amazing. You can hear them running in and out of the burrows. You can hear them scurrying through their habitat. It's incredible, and they're so cute. They do not look like a rat at all. So you got a bum rat. So thank you, Princess. Thank you, Rihanna. Okay, this, this next presentation is bittersweet. I first served with this gentleman on the Temecula Public Traffic Safety Commission back in, I want to say, 1997, maybe, something like that. Ron Gario's just been such a fixture in Temecula forever, and we were lucky to be able to have him on Traffic and Safety and then on the Planning Commission. You know, it's really important to have somebody that remembers where we've come from to help you plan where it is you're going and the standards that you want to maintain. So Ron Gario, are you here someplace?
Well, I was.
There you are. Select your video so we can see you.
Start video. There we go.
There you go. So we could tell some stories about traffic and safety. I mean, it was really fun and very rewarding, but you know, you're going to be a hard fixture to replace, because you've been here for so long. Oh, now, now you're muted. You got to unmute. You got your, you got your video. There you go. Now say it again.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay. I can't see anything. Somehow I lost the video, so whatever.
Well, we got you.
Okay. Yeah, you and I go back a long way. I think we started back in the late 80s with Town Association.
Actually, it was, it was, it was seven, well, yeah, it actually probably was in the 80s.
We had the rodeo and.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Yeah. That's, I was very fortunate to meet future leaders of this city. And we had Pat Birdzall and Peg Moore, Ron Roberts.
Ron Gario. Ron Gario.
The incorporation committee back then, and here we are today. You know, we incorporated 89 and 1990. We were off and running. I get on the Traffic Commission. I get to serve with Ron Roberts. We know his stellar career. Seven years later, on the Planning Commission, just in time for the regional mall. Thanks to Ron and folks. And it's been a real experience ever since. I have to do a shout out to the thousands and thousands of people, literally over 30 years, that I have had the pleasure of meeting and working with in all the various organizations that thrive in this city, that have made this city what it is. Not only that, but the leadership from the top down, past city council members, current city council members, and all of the staff on the different departments. Let me shout out to them. This city is absolutely blessed to have had the staff that we have. The work that they do in every department is just unbelievable. But one department I'm a little biased about, and that's community development. We have some, you know, a great leader in Luke Watson. I've known Luke for many years. Our senior planner, manager, Stuart Fisk, another one I've known since 97, just a great person, very professional. And then we have Matt and Brandon. We have Scott, Jaime, Dale. Who am I missing? And Eric. These, these people work just unbelievably hard in the most pressing times. They deal with all kinds of issues, all kinds of state mandates that are changing constantly, and they get the job done. And people just don't understand how long it takes for a project to get to where we have to look at it, whether it's you or Planning Commission, months, sometimes years.
Yeah.
And, you know, they, they do it. They do it over and over again, and my hat's off to them. I've learned a lot from them. They've become friends, and it's just been a blessing to work with them. And of course, I would be remiss in not saying our, our legal department, Peter, you have given Planning Commission some of the best, from Bill to Candace to Maricela, they, they just keep us in line, again, keeping up with all the latest laws and changes and mandates and whatever. People just don't have any idea what goes on when it comes to planning. So, you know, a lot of recognition should go their way. And of course, the one person, the, the top of my list is my beautiful wife, Sue, of 53 years. She wanted to let me do all this. So it's, it's been fun. It's been great. I wish I could see you, but somehow I lost the video.
Oh, look down at the bottom of your computer screen. Do you see a little camera in a blue square? That's the zoom, that's the zoom icon.
But now it's not. So.
Shoot. Well, this, let me tell you, Randy is going to read the proclamation for you, but I will say that anytime there was an event, a project, a program, a steering committee meeting, a budget committee meeting, and in the old days, anytime there was a kids' event, baseball games, you know, Temecula, when we first moved here, and you, Ron, there was not a retail store here. There was the Sears catalog store where you could order things, but I remember having to go to Lake Elsinore to go to Walmart, to Kmart. So there really wasn't a major retail store here, and how things have changed. And you guys have.
Main Street or Main Street.
Yes, right. Exactly. Dick and Pat Birdzall. So you have really honored the general plan, and really, that's what's kept us on the straight and narrow as far as the beautiful city that we have today. Just every piece of it, even from the design of the buildings and the way homes look on the outside, you know, they're just not boxes. They, they're, they're beautiful. And you, you know, we have you to thank for that. You've been here for the whole thing. Your fingerprints are all over town, or your handprints, I guess, are all over town.
There it is. Okay, now I can see you. All right.
We got you.
Came back.
There you go. All right.
I said, I don't know where that came from. I didn't find it funny. I don't know what that meant.
Okay, so Randy, read it quick before Ron disappears again.
Yeah, absolutely, Madam Mayor. Mr. Gario, it is absolutely my pleasure to read this proclamation for you today on behalf of the mayor. And then, Madam Mayor, I also know that our community development director, Luke Watson, might want to have a comment as well as your colleagues.
All right.
Whereas the city council would like to recognize Ron Gario for over 30 years of dedicated service to the City of Temecula, and whereas Mr. Gario was first appointed to the Traffic and Transportation Commission, which was later established as the Public Traffic Safety Commission on October 2, 1990, where he served until he was appointed to the Planning Commission. And whereas Mr. Gario began his service on the Planning Commission on June 10, 1997, where he is currently serving his eighth term. And whereas Mr. Gario served as chair and vice chair for the Public Traffic Safety Commission and Planning Commission, whereas Mr. Gario has made a significant impact to increasing Temecula's high quality of life and his roles on the Public Traffic Safety Commission and Planning Commission. And whereas he has been instrumental in approving many projects that led to the planned growth and development in Temecula. And whereas a small sample of these projects and initiatives include during his time with the City of Temecula include the Medline Building, Abbott, Mount Jacinto College Campus, Promenade Mall, and Promenade Mall Main Street Expansion, the Mercedes-Benz of Temecula, Audi Temecula, and Temecula Valley Lexus Auto Dealerships, the Santa Margarita Ecological Reserve Annexation, and Red Hawk Vale Ranch Annexation, the Wolf Creek Specific Plan, Harveston Specific Plan, Old Town Specific Plan, Uptown Specific Plan.
Everything.
All Terris Specific Plan, the Crown Hill Development, Temecula Valley Hospital, and the Aurora Paw Summers Bend Community, the 2005 General Plan, multi-use bikeways and trails, Master Plan, Growth Management Plan, the Development Code, and the City Design Guidelines. And whereas we would wholeheartedly like to thank Mr. Gario for his many contributions and years of dedicated service to the City of Temecula, and we warmly wish him all the best in his future. And now, therefore, you, Madam Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, hereby proclaim today, April 27, 2021. Gario did. And Mr. Gario, we will be sending you a very nice plaque that is properly framed and all that to your primary residence. Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Wow, after hearing that, you need to retire.
Now I know where 30 years is gone.
Yes, it is remarkable, just to look back. And I know you can remember what everything looked like with the addition of every building and project. And I, I can too. Sheep where the mall used to, the mall is, there used to be sheep grazing there.
And a dairy where Abbott.
Yeah. Uh huh. Yeah, it's amazing. So, you know, we wish you all the best. You're always part of the family. I know you're going to, wherever you go, I know you're going to be streaming our council meetings. So, you know, you can keep up with everything. And, you know, drop us an email once in a while and let us know how you're doing and how Sue's doing. And, you know, make us all jealous.
Oh, I will. Yeah. I mean, it has been a real family deal. It's been a lot of fun. And, you know, I'm going to miss it a lot of ways, but it's time to move on. You know, you need some fresh blood, some fresh thinking.
I don't know. Your, your thinking's been really good and very clear, very, very good. So check your mail.
Say hi to Tom for me. I haven't seen him for a long time.
Oh, he's retired. He is now the squire lording over the, you know, the household. So Squire Edwards can give you a few points.
Yeah, right.
Hey, thanks a lot, Ron.
Thank you. God bless.
God bless. Bye.
Madam Mayor.
If I may, real quick.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Luke. Go ahead.
Jonathan, I think we have a slide.
Oh.
To get out of here without a huge thank you from the staff of the Plan Department and the Community Development Department as a whole. You already mentioned it, but, you know, this is, this is the current group, but you've worked with so many over the years. And, you know, your leadership and guidance has been invaluable to the staff to provide the perspective that, you know, your long tenure affords, and it's been absolutely invaluable to everyone. And we thank you. We've learned so much from you, not only just in the planning field, the technical stuff, but also, you know, to how to handle yourself in meetings and to, to represent the city with class. And I personally thank you. And like you said, I've known you for a long time. I've known your family and have been just absolutely honored to work with you. And we look, you know, we, we hope for you for the best, for your, your ventures as you move forward, you and Sue and the rest of the family. And just know that you can always come by and stop by whenever you're back in California and say hi to us. So.
And you better.
I will. I promise. And, and all you guys are the greatest.
So council members, anything? Zach? No, Matt? Okay, Matt's going first, Zach, then you next.
Oh, Ron, it's a, you're, you're going to be missed. I mean, you're always a part of the city. You're always welcome. You're always part of the family. But you brought expertise, you brought thoughtfulness, you brought things to the table from, from your background and experience that, that made the city prosper. You know, you did exactly what, what the city needed when it needed it. And we can't thank you enough for, for all, all your dedication and service for, for so many years. It's, it's hard, hard to see you go. But we cannot thank you enough for, for everything you've done for us.
All right. Thank you all for that. And you and I have some, some commonality. We were doing, you know, the county was doing our hazmat looks back in the day, and we had to change that because things were slipping through the cracks.
Yep, yep.
Well, we're all, we're all over it now, I think. Yeah, thank you. So Zach?
Yeah, Ron, you're certainly going to be missed. I enjoyed serving on the commission while you were on the commission as well. And, you know, just continuing to serve alongside you at this capacity. And, you know, I feel like, I feel a little bit of privilege to sort of take that little piece of that baton that you've carried and, and over that 30 years and pass it off to that next generation of leaders and commissioners in the city. So like, you did a fantastic job and extremely proud of the work you've done. And, and as I, you know, make my way across the city, you truly have your, your fingerprints, your handprints on, on many, many, if not the entire city. So just a good hearty thank you from me and our family for making the city what it truly is, just a wonderful place to live.
Well, thank you and your, your commission for all the great things that they do. I mean, that's what really makes the city. You know, we can build it, but you got to have fun. So.
Yes. All right. So Aaron, anybody else?
I'll just say, I didn't get to spend a lot of time with Ron, but just the fact that he's, he's a true public servant, someone who does what he did for that long, for literally no pay. I mean, that's, that's the definition of a public servant, and that's what builds Temecula. So I appreciate what you've done, even though we didn't get to spend a lot of time together. I know what you've done. So thank you very much for what you did. So have a nice retirement.
Thank you. Now, our philosophy, even with our kids, is wherever you live, give back. And I hope more people will do that. It's a lot of fun.
It is a lot of fun, huh? All right. Well, I think, I think we can tell you goodbye for, for real this time. So if it's not goodbye, it's just farewell, and we know that we'll be talking to you again.
Thank you.
Oh, Zach? Zach had something else. What's that?
Well, I just didn't want, I see Aaron's hand up. I didn't want him to, I think he's got a few words for Ron, maybe.
Oh, okay. I see it. I'm sorry, Aaron.
Yeah, no, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ron, I didn't want the moment to pass without just thanking you for, for 30 years, three decades of service to the City of Temecula. I've had the privilege of watching you work in that Planning Commission capacity from, like, really every level of, of staff, you know, during that time, and, and just come to really appreciate the role of the Planning Commission and, and, and the role of economic development and how it occurs, and it doesn't happen by chance. And, and we say that all the time around here about nothing was just happenstance. There was a lot of good decisions that were made, and, and there was a lot of intentional effort that went into it. And a lot of that occurred on your watch, and it occurred with you and the Planning Commission in concert with the planning staff. So it, it does not get lost on me how Temecula developed out and the role of, of the Planning Commission. So thank you, Ron. All the best in, in your future and, and your next chapter of life. And again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Aaron. God bless. Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, Jessica, we may as well get everybody. Jess, go ahead.
I'll just say, Ron, I know we didn't get to work together very long, only about three, four months, but we really haven't even been able to talk. But I just wish you the best and blessings for you and your family, whatever adventure you are about to step into. So God bless you, and I look forward to seeing, maybe hearing some more about your next adventure.
And you're a Marine Corps, correct?
We're, yes.
Semper Fi.
I'm a Rod, Devil Dog.
All right, you two. We're not going to let this go any farther.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Oh, the great guy. Okay, so now we have our board and commission reports. Ron Gario's coming back. Since you're still here, you want to give your commission report?
Gee.
Uh oh. He's coming back.
Okay.
I see. There you are. I see you.
Okay, there we go. Next slide. Do they do that? Or what am I doing?
No, they'll do it. There you go.
Okay, so at our April 21st commission meeting, we approved a home product review for Planning Area 15 of the Aurora Paw Ranch Specific Plan to allow for three unique detached single-family plans with three architectural styles on 45 lots. There was one public comment concerning timing of the construction of improvements required to Nicholas Road, and the commission voted 5-0 to approve the application. And I have to say, the applicant did a really great job with the architecture. He really stuck to the specific plan guidelines. And gosh, the Nicholas Road, we talked about that 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We also did approval of a modification application to add, I can't read it, 224, something like that, square feet of Crawford hallway, and a new tower element, and updated paint materials for the existing Del Taco restaurant located on the west side of Inez Road, north of Ranch, California Road. There were no comments. We approved that. They did the hallway so that patrons could access the restrooms from inside and not outside any longer for obvious reasons. And this is their new look. Now they're adding a tower element. So that concludes my presentation.
All right. Well, thank you again. That was the final presentation.
That was. I'm out.
Very nostalgic. So, so we'll wrap that presentation up for you and send it to you in coffee book, in coffee table book form. How's that? All right. You take care of yourself. Okay, so next we have Mr. Bob Hagel from Public Traffic and Safety Commission.
Good evening.
The Fun Commission.
Yeah, Commission. First, Ron, from the Public Traffic Safety Commission, we wish you a great retirement and thank you for your service. So we had a very busy meeting last Thursday. Actually, it was quite packed. And with things on the agenda, we began with a presentation on Flock. I think the council has, have you received a presentation on Flock?
Yes. Yes.
You have? Okay. So you basically know what it is. Flock is a video system that will be installed in the city of Temecula that will replace the automatic license plate reader program. And we were thrilled to hear about it. We believe it'll bring a, a great jump in the level of service in being able to find criminals that are either in our city committing a crime or in other cities surrounding us committing a crime and coming through Temecula. One of the things that I think is very, very good about the system is that it respects everyone's privacy. The system only views the vehicle from the back, does not view people, and it is extremely smart. It's an artificial intelligence system and it is constantly checking all the police databases for vehicles that are either stolen or involved in some kind of a crime. So we appreciate it, the captain making the presentation and we were all, the whole, the whole commission stands, stands behind that decision. I think it's a great decision and great expenditure of money. The next item on the agenda is a problem at La Paz Road Roundabout. There has been a speeding problem. And there is one neighbor that lives on the corner that's had his fence run through three times and has asked if we can take a look at making some changes. So staff has spent some, some real good quality time and there will be a restriping plan that will change the angle of, of how cars are going into it, which will really help with slowing down the cars. There is also radar speed signs that would be placed at both entrances on, from Inez. And we will be eliminating the left and right-hand turn from La Paz onto Inez, which I think is something that's fairly unusual for roundabouts and perhaps is causing some misunderstanding of really what, what's going on there. So I think it's the, the roundabouts being simplified and I think the angle approaches will, will really help to slow down speed. The next thing, we also voted on that with a, a 4-0 with an abstention from Commissioner Richardson, who wasn't there yet. He was stuck in traffic on 15. The next item is Pajol Street, the, where Pajol meets First Street at Rotary Park. And there was a request to look at stop signs there and perhaps make it a multi-way, multi-way stop sign and to improve, enhance the crossing, pedestrian crossing there. So staff came up with the idea of a multiways stop sign there and to stripe the crosswalks that are going in each of the, each of the directions. There is a bus stop there, which also counts for why there is a high pedestrian count, which is approximately 200 per day. The, the intersection does not meet the ADT, the number of daily trips to put a stop signs in each direction. But there is a problem with, one of the turns, you, sight distance is not, not long enough to meet the criteria. So we are recommending that a multi, multi-way stop sign go in there and that the whole intersection be, have a striping for crosswalks.
Nice.
The next thing that we covered was Nicole Lane. And Nicole Lane is one of the, well, is the road that is adjacent to Mount Santa Sinto College's, the new campus, the, what I'm calling the Abbott Campus. And I, what I think is great about what staff is recommending here is that often we have issues with people not wanting to pay for parking at high schools or colleges and parking on the streets. So there is a striping plan that would allow or actually not allow parking on either side of the street all the way around. And that's being done with buffered bike lanes, which I think will actually encourage maybe some people to ride a bike to school. So I think that's, that's a good thing. One of the things we were concerned about is pushing parking out into the neighborhoods, which can be a problem anytime that we do red striping on the curbs. So that's something that staff will really monitor and will revisit if there becomes a problem in any of the neighborhoods around. The next item is Puber Road. Councilmember Schwenck requested that bike lanes be put on both the north and south side. And Puber Road will be resurfaced. And while, after that's done, it'll be restripped. It's a fairly complex striping plan, but it will work. There will not be any two-lane traffic in either direction in any, any parts from Margarita through Butterfield. So we will have bike lanes on both sides. And as a reminder, that is where Temecula Valley High School is and Lynnfield School. And so that should help any students that want to ride their bike to school. There is no sidewalk on the north side. There is a sidewalk on the south side and there is a bike trail and a walking trail on the south side. So that should give anybody who wants to take an alternative, non-vehicle method to get to school should give them, you know, several alternatives. And there is striped crosswalks at Meadows and at Margarita. So the next is, was for, for our information, which is a road that you may be familiar with, you may not be familiar with, is Sandia Creek Drive, which is, goes from Dulles into Fallbrook. And it is a very popular secondary way to get south from here rather than getting on 15. It is used a lot by agricultural trucks going, doing deliveries down there. And it is very popular with the Marines getting to the back gate of Pendleton. Part of that road is private road, 2.2 miles of it is private road. The residents requested from the city of Fallbrook that they allow it to be gated and closed to the public. It was voted 12, 2, and 1 to allow that to occur. So they, they're just communicating with the city of Temecula, knowing that we have a lot of residents that use that. There's a lot of Marines that live here that will need to find an alternative way to get, get to work. And there will be turnarounds placed at both gates. So nobody will get stuck there. They will be able to turn around, but there will be signage right around Rancho California Road. Before, you know, before anybody heads up the hill, there will be signage to let them know that the road will be closed. And that's pretty much it. We did have a report from CHP. They are working on street racing is one of the projects they're working on, as well as they received a grant for high crash reduction. So there's, those are two things that are being worked on in the Temecula area. And that's all I have for tonight.
I have a question for you, Bob. Who was it that voted again to close that major arterial between here and Fallbrook, blocking the Marines and everyone that goes south?
It's actually the Fallbrook Community Planning Group, which is a 15-member board. And the vote was, was 12 in favor, 2 against, and 1 did not vote.
I believe it. Okay.
Yeah. So now what, there is one good thing there that in case of an emergency, you know, it is, will be open for emergency vehicles. But I would also expect that if we were to have a major earthquake or fire up there, that that road would be opened as a secondary method to get out of, you know, out of the area.
Yeah, well, somebody probably should have thought about that. We came back that way a couple of weeks ago and there was a horrific backup. And there was a detour that was like a, you know, just swung way out and around and then just came back and met with her. I said, what in the world are they doing? So now I know. That's unbelievable to me that they would be allowed to do that.
Yeah, and that's, was always one of my favorite Sunday drives to spend a couple hours.
As unbelievable as it may be, thank you, Bob.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right. So we're gonna go on to our public safety report and Captain Zachary Hall, how are you?
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Solva. I'll be sitting in tonight for Captain Hall, presenting the report to you.
Lieutenant, hi.
How you doing?
Good.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good, okay. Well, we'll start with our calls for service and we're once again comparing 2021 to 2019. Because as you know, 2020 was a kind of a weird year, so it's hard to get accurate stats. So looking at our calls to, calls for service year to date, as of March 31st, City of Temecula had 21,490 calls for service. And that includes calls coming from the public as well as self-initiated stuff our traffic guys do and all our deputies do. So that's all included in our calls for service. The month of March alone, we had about 8,001. So we have a jump about, almost about 2,000 from March of 2019. So our call for service are going up. And next slide, please. There we go. Getting into our response times, our priority one response times are going down slightly from March of 2019. We're about 5.6 per call. Priority two, three, and four, those have been going up from March of 2019. And with that, it's hard to say why exactly they're going up. Could be the number of calls are increasing. Calls were a little further away. We'd have to really research that to see why they're going up. But the main priority, the priority ones are going down. That's kind of our emergency calls. Our, our major traffic accidents are in-progress calls and stuff like that. So we're getting to those rather quickly. And our priority two, three, and four, they're the lower priority calls. So they sometimes, if something else comes up, they tend to be put on the back burner and they pen for a little while longer. So that's also why they take a little more time to get there. Next slide, please. Going into our part one crimes, these are the eight crimes that are reported monthly to the FBI for the uniform crime report. And as you can see, our total violent crimes are, went up slightly from March of 2019. Once again, we're comparing to 2019 instead of 2020. Our total property crimes are right about the same. They increased by one. Looks like our larceny is going down. Our deaths are going down. That's a good thing. Does anybody have any questions on the crimes from the statute here?
No.
Okay. Our metro team, as you all know, we started that about middle of March. So these stats are just from March until the end of March. And their first two weeks, basically, they had 24 felony arrests, that warrants and felony onsite arrests. Their misdemeanor arrests and warrants are 64. DUIs, just for that two-week period, was six. Traffic citations, you know, we have a couple motors out there writing tickets and 176. And they also have a lot of business and bar checks. They're trying to get out there and get to know all the business owners, all the bar owners. And basically make it so people can enjoy downtown. They can enjoy Old Town and go out there and have no problems. So right now, the metro team is doing really good.
Really?
Next slide. And our traffic team, as you can see, our, our total citations increased about 400 from March of 19 to March of 2021.
Wow.
Our hazardous citations almost doubled. Our non-hazardous went down a little bit. Parking citations are pretty close to the same. Our traffic collisions are going down. Hopefully that's a result of more hazardous citations. Again, our traffic accidents down. Injury was down from 23 to 20 and our non-injuries are also down. Our DUI arrests are up, so hopefully that's cutting down on our, our injury collisions also. So traffic team is busy out there. Does anybody have any questions on, on the slides there for the presentation?
Yes.
Go ahead, Stu.
So what is the difference between hazardous and non-hazardous?
Okay. Hazardous would be your running red light citations, stop sign citations. Think of anything that can really cause a collision. Illegal lane changes. Just hazardous driving. Your non-hazardous would be your mechanical violations, registration type violations. Cell phone violations are considered the non-hazardous, even though they can cause collisions. And then our parking citations are separate from the non-hazardous. Did that help answer the question? Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, I think that's good. Anybody? I don't see anybody else.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Excellent report.
Thank you.
Okay, so what we have next is public comments. Tonight, we've received nearly 100 public comments on non-agenda items. And in an effort to balance the city's business that's on the agenda with the comments by the public on non-agenda items, we'll be receiving public comments for 30 minutes as noted on the agenda. We will then conduct the business on the agenda and we will then continue to receive the balance of public comments on non-agenda items as it is important for us to hear from all segments of the community. I will now read the rules for public comments. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of this agenda. So we're in a virtual environment and that's why. So Randy, we're gonna do this for 30 minutes and then do the city, the, the city business as the agenda states and then come back to this. So can you, go ahead?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I will go ahead and start. It's roughly 7:50. So we'll go until about 8:20 or so. And I would ask Madam Mayor if you can go ahead and let me know that as well. And then, of course, these are non-agendized items, so they are limited to three minutes. So with that, we'll go ahead and get going. And the first is Suzanne Lane. I completely agree with how this is worded. So, oh, I think that's something else. Suzanne Lane, "As citizens, we demand the draconian measure of requiring the council members to wear masks against their will be withdrawn. The measure is unfounded and goes against logic, common sense, and many well-trusted doctors. In fact, according to America's frontline doctors, it is a testimony to the power of propaganda, institutional capture, and the desire to socially conform that masking of the general population has successfully been imposed during the COVID-19 era. The harms from this imposition are palpable and potentially long-term and gurgantuan, not the least of which is the psychological training of the public to comply with an absurd measure that has direct negative impact personally. They, they review the mounting evidence of the obvious. Universal masking harms people in society without any detectable benefit. You can read their scientific findings here and a link is provided. I eagerly await your response as we are sure you understand your need to represent the countless constituents you have that want this nonsense to stop. You need to lead by example and the example you are setting is one that defies logic and science. Please change course." The next speaker is Jane Luhan. "I'm appalled to be reading about and listening to the many malicious, nasty, and hateful comments being spewed about Temecula City Council member Jessica Alexander because she chooses to take a stand on an issue she feels strongly about. We all feel strongly about something and when intolerant people feel the need to be malicious, nasty, and hateful, all it causes is division. We are certainly witnessing division at the highest level I have ever seen in our country, which saddens me to my core." all it causes is division. We are certainly witnessing division at the highest level I have ever seen in our country, which saddens me to my core. If I have learned anything, it is that those who preach tolerance are the least tolerant. Those who preach tolerance but aren't willing to tolerate another point of view are hypocrites. Jessica Alexander is an upstanding and honorable person with the highest of integrity who served community as a police officer in her country as a United States Marine. She deserves the utmost respect for her sacrifices. I want Jessica to know that I support her as a current Temecula City Council member, and that she doesn't deserve the malicious, nasty, hateful comments that she has had to endure at the hands of an intolerant hateful group that only sees things through their own rose-colored glasses. I wish Jessica much success." The next speaker is Jeff Document. "As a physician of over thirty years and a concerned citizen, I strongly suggest that you reevaluate your policy on masks. Please follow the science and common sense approach to this issue. Many states have eliminated the mask mandate and are not experiencing any significant negative effects. In fact, I would suggest that they have had numerous positive consequences as a result of normal social interactions. Florida is certainly a prime example. The vast majority of politicians remove their masks during on-camera interactions, even when in a public venue. They understand the importance of facial expressions in communication with the public. When people are separated by greater than six feet, the usefulness of a mask is virtually null. The risk of an infection causing significant illness death is miniscule, with the exception of how it affects specific subsects of the population. Someone would have to be totally off the grid to have not heard that the elderly medically complicated, immune compromised, and those who are obese are all known to be at increased risk. Please let people make their own choices as to how much risk they are willing to take. If attendees at the meeting feel more comfortable wearing a mask, no problem. If someone is obviously ill, then they should not attend, because otherwise, let board members and other individuals exercise their God-given rights to live their lives without having to endure absurd attempts to eliminate all risk. Otherwise, what is next? Shall we eliminate skydiving, football corvettes, and other potentially dangerous activities in order to eliminate all risk? Shouldn't Temecula be on the forefront of science and a beacon to others on how common sense should be applied? I look forward to seeing the faces of our board members and not their surgical or designer masks." The next speaker is Jamie Ann Lopez. "I am appalled at the rant Councilmember Jessica Alexander made comparing mask-wearing to the plight of Rosa Parks. The mental gymnastics that is required to equate the inhumane treatment of blacks for hundreds of years to the temporary mask mandate is really astonishing. Her rant reeks of white privilege, and I find her comments and beliefs to be insensitive and way out of touch with reality. Please remove her of her duties. How does this person represent Temecula? She is another smear on our fine city. There should be no place for this level of ignorance in our city's government." The next speaker is Laura Quaid. "Let it be known that I fully support Councilmember Alexander's and Stewart's reasons for not wearing a mask at council meetings. It is not reasonable or logical to require a mask to be worn when we allow no mask to be worn in public restaurants upon being seated. Councilmembers Alexander and Stewart will be sitting during the council meetings and at least twenty feet away from fellow council members. Is COVID only transferable when one is standing? As a citizen of this country, I find it discriminatory to require citizens to wear a mask to hide their faces, their emotions, their expressions, and their individuality. It has become a tool used to manipulate people to continue to live in a state of suspended fear. I wish to see the faces of our council members and to clearly hear what they are seeing. A state of unreasonable fear is being fostered in this community with the continued mask-referred demands. I expect our leers to demonstrate a posture of confidence to their citizens and to not foster fear demonstrated by hiding behind a mask with muffled voices. I respect Councilmembers Alexander's and Stewart's position to not wear a mask in chambers." The next speaker is Bob Quaid. "It has come to my attention that there is a group of individuals who are attacking Councilmember Alexander because of her stance against the ludicrous mask mandate requiring members to mask up if they want to be allowed to attend in-chamber council meetings or stay segregated in their offices. Councilmember Alexander referred to her plight to Rosa Parks, an American hero who stood up against injustice, shown blacks back in the dark days of the Jim Crow South. Councilmember Alexander's comparison may have been a bit of a stretch, but for her detractors to labor her, label her comment as racist and hateful is an extremely racist and a twisted interpretation of her stance against oppression, implying that a white woman cannot use a black woman as her example. The people of Temecula are tired of being manipulated by the state and county officials to gain power over us and segregating our council between mask or no mask, only vows to the manipulation, and is not acceptable. Wearing anything less than an N-ninety-five-rated mask has never been questionably proven by science to stop the spread of the COVID virus. No more than a rabbit's foot is scientifically proven to bring good luck. Both are superstition. The mask-wearing has outlived whatever illusion it was intended to serve. It's time to end the COVID paranoia represented by the mask and get back to regular city business in person. Our council members were elected to serve their residents of their district in chambers where their constituents can clearly see them and hear them without the encumbrance of useless masks, but only muffled speech and in Councilmember Alexander's case, further endangers not protects her health. Lastly, our beautiful city hall should be wide open again, just like Old Town, where every weekend you find people like me and my wife who are not so afraid of dying that we stop living, eating, drinking, and enjoying our neighbors and friends without the chain of wearing a mask. Life is wonderful when you're trusting your amazing God, given ninety-nine percent effect immune system for protection and not living in the darkness of fear and death. Our elected officials, it's time for you to stop trusting in man and start acting in faith and trusting in God, to whom you pray to before each council meeting." The next speaker is Summerberg. "Thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns. My name is Summerberg, and I have been a resident of Temecula for over a decade. I would like to address the shocking culturally insensitive remarks by Councilmember Jessica Alexander at the April City Council meeting. To hear Councilmember Alexander compare the mask mandate to the oppression of the black community and herself to Rosa Parks was so out of line, it made me feel nauseated. This is especially sickening after I learned that Councilmember Alexander did not attend the diversity training workshop on April sixth. Councilmember Alexander's own Facebook page tagline states, "Strengthening the heart of Temecula, protecting its values and traditions. Unify, educate, and serve." I do not see those words reflected in Councilmember Alexander's actions and statements. She chose not to educate herself at the workshop. She is choosing not to unify the city or the council by defying mask mandates. She should be setting an example for citizens, yet she is dividing the community by making tone-deaf statements about racial icons. I urge the council and the city to take action. Please address this behavior with a public public statement in support of unity and support of the black community. And please demand that Councilmember Alexander receive the diversity and equality training that she needs and has previously refused. I ask that if she chooses to remain ignorant and closed-minded on matters of racial equality and her own privilege, that she resign from office. Please stand up for the BIPOC community in Temecula. There is no place for this behavior here." The next speaker is Bob Cowell. "Please just open up the Temecula City Council to citizens on May fourth. Most of the surrounding city councils are open, and some of the city council persons don't wear masks. You are more than six feet apart and maybe twenty feet from the citizens. Masks should be as needed now. The worst is over, and most people have had it or have been vaxxed. Those that can't wear a mask should now be required, not be required to wear one. Those who want to wear a mask can continue to wear one. It's time to return to normal. We Americans are free to make our own choices on most things, and it is time to let us free so we can relive our lives before COVID started." The next speaker is Whitney Walsh. "I have seen the video of the last council meeting, and I'm deeply shocked and offended that one of our civic leaders is comparing wearing a mask to protect the health of our community to Rosa Parks' action after being forced to submit to institutional racism. This is especially disturbing in light of the fact that another one of Temecula City Council members, James Stewart, made headlines a few months ago by saying he didn't believe there's ever been a good person of color killed by a police officer. I understand that Ms. Alexander failed to attend the Equity and Diversity Training that all other council members attended, set up in part as a response to Councilman Stewart's headline-making remarks. It appears she truly needs this training and should rectify this immediately and apologize for comparing herself to a civil rights icon. She should also apologize for her self-centered remarks that do nothing but harm this community. When running for her office, Ms. Alexander said she was exactly the city council member that Temecula that Temecula needs right now in these trying and unpredictable times. She said one of her three visionary goals was building bridges, unifying the community by connecting diverse people and organizations together. Her remarks on April thirteenth have done just the opposite, and once again, our city council is presenting Temecula as, at the very least, as tone deaf." The next speaker is Allison Donahue Biggs. "I am a Temecula resident of twenty-three years, and my husband and I have raised our two children in this community. My youngest is currently a sophomore at Great Oak High School. After hearing the remarks made by Jessica Alexander at the last city council meeting about mask-wearing, I had to send in a comment. All I heard from this public servant was how mask-wearing affects her. Not only was this extremely selfish and inappropriate to her seat and her job, she then compared herself to Rosa Parks for not wearing a mask. This should not go unaddressed, as this is extremely offensive. I understand that Ms. Alexander failed to attend the Equity and Diversity Training that all of the other council members attended. It appears that she truly needs this training and should rectify this immediately and apologize for comparing herself to a civil rights icon. She should also apologize for her self-centered remarks that do nothing but harm this community. To combat COVID and ensure no more deaths, no more debilitating illnesses, no more jobs and businesses lost, we have to be in this together. We need to follow the safety protocols to ensure we are not infecting each other, and one easy way to do this is to wear a mask. To say in a city council meeting that she is against mask-wearing is just downright dangerous. Jessica Alexander should resign unless she retracts her statement. Apologize for comparing herself to Rosa Parks, attend the Diversity and Equity Training, and attend ready commission meetings." The next speaker is Lloyd Mize. And actually, it's Lloyd Mize followed by Jenny Soderquist. It's an identical comment, except for one sentence, the very first one. "My last email to Temecula City Council was in August twenty twenty." That is the separating comment. The rest of them are identical. "You are not representing the interest of the majority of citizens in Temecula, and it is getting worse. I supported by a majority of like-minded Temecula citizens, wrote you in August demanding not to form the Ready Commission. You did not listen. In November, we elected Jessica Alexander, and we elected Stu Stewart to the Office of Temecula City Council to represent our values and city government. The hate speech and untruths leveled against Jessica Alexander must stop. This is our city collectively. I respectfully ask and respectfully demand, again, supported by the majority of like-minded Temecula citizens, to immediately stop the required training of the Ready Commission, do away with the expense of the Ready Commission, and eliminate it. The citizens of Temecula do not want this and did not vote for the Ready Commission. Immediately eliminate the edict of mask-wearing in Temecula. If people want to wear a mask, great. There is no science or evidence that masks stop the transmission of disease. They are harmful. Keep all business open with no restricted capacity requirements. Respect Jessica Alexander as our elected official and discourage the rhetoric that she is culturally insensitive. She has the Christ-centered and conservative values we voted for. We love our community and all people. The interference and outright statements that we are not inclusive and that we are racist is hurtful and nontrue. Stop this behavior and messaging. Discourage it. Embrace Jessica and the citizens that elected her to the Office of Temecula City Council. She and we strive to engage and make better struggles, trials and tribulations of all citizens and people within our community. We are people of love and care for all of our citizens and our beautiful Temecula. Together, we support, care for, and love all people. Let's be a model community for other for other communities." Again, that was Lloyd Mize and Jenny Soderquist. The next is Yolanda Villafana. And actually, that one was also identical, except for one or two sentences. So I'm just gonna read it just in case. "In November, we elected Jessica Alexander, and we elected Stu Stewart to Office of Temecula City Council to represent our values and city government. The hate speech and untruths leveled against Jessica Alexander must stop. I respectfully ask and respectfully demand, again, supported by the majority of like-minded Temecula citizens, to immediately stop the required training of the Ready Commission, do away with the expense of the Ready Commission, and eliminate it. The citizens of Temecula do not want this and did not vote for a Ready Commission. Immediately eliminate the edict of mask-wearing in Temecula. If people want to wear a mask, great. There is no science or evidence that masks stop the transmission of disease. They are harmful. Keep all businesses open with no restricted capacity requirements. Respect Jessica Alexander as our elected official and discourage the rhetoric that she is culturally insensitive. She has the Christ-centered and conservative values we voted for. We love our community and all people. The inference and outright statements that we are not inclusive and that we are racist is hurtful and not true. Stop this behavior and messaging. Discourage it. This type of behavior creates more division, not unity. We, the people, voted for Jessica Alexander and appreciate her love for the city and dedicated service over the years for our nation." The next speaker is Gia Rida. "I request that members of the city council make a public statement denouncing the words of Councilmember Jessica Alexander regarding her inappropriate and racially insensitive comment comparing mask-wearing to Rosa Parks. I also request she be required to attend the Diversity and Equality Training workshop she previously missed on April sixth, twenty twenty-one. I was disappointed to hear comments by Councilmember Jessica Alexander comparing the reasonable lifesaving act of donning a face covering to the civil rights struggles of Rosa Parks. Her comments were insensitive and historically ill-informed. It is shockingly inappropriate to compare the task of slowing the spread of a deadly virus to the hateful institutionalized segregation enforced upon people of color in the Jim Crow South. Furthermore, if Ms. Alexander is going to invoke the spirit of Rosa Parks, she should at least understand the bus incident instead of making up her own version of the story. Newsflash, Jessica, Rosa Parks did not demand to sit in the front of the bus. She simply refused to give up her seat in the colored section of the bus for a white man. Hate and intolerance has no place in Temecula. Denounce Ms. Alexander's comments and require her to attend training." Next speaker is Simon Cooper. "As a concerned citizen of the community, please considering the following. In November, citizens of Temecula elected Jessica Alexander, and we elected Stu Stewart to the Office of Temecula City Council to represent our values and city government. Since that time, there has been an abundance of hate speech and untruths leveled against Jessica Alexander, and it must stop. I respectfully ask and respectfully demand, again, supported by the majority of like-minded Temecula citizens, to immediately stop the required training of the Ready Commission, to do away with the expense of the Ready Commission and eliminate it. Citizens of Temecula do not want this and did not vote for the Ready Commission. Also, I am asking that you support the immediate elimination of mask-wearing edict in Temecula. There is no science or evidence that face covering stopped the transmission of disease, and in fact, there are studies that show evidence of them actually being harmful to humans. It is time that all local businesses should be allowed to stay open with no restricted capacities. Jessica Alexander is our elected official and needs to be respected, and the rhetoric that she is culturally insensitive needs to be discouraged and condemned. She has the Christ-centered and conservative values that were voted for. We love our community and all people. The inference and outright statements that Jessica and her supporters are not inclusive and that we are racist is hurtful and not true. This is, stop this behavior and messaging by discouraging and condemning it. With Jessica representing the citizens of her district, we strive to engage and make better the struggles, trials and tribulations of all citizens, people within our community. We are people of love and care for all of our residents and our beautiful Temecula and everywhere. Together, we support, care for, and love all people. Let's be a model community for other communities as well." Next speaker is Tanya Spadolary. "The views expressed by City Councilor Jessica Alexander at the City Council meeting on April thirteenth were extremely misleading and hurtful. To compare a mask mandate to the racist laws of segregation is a false equivalency. It's very simple, and please make sure Mrs. Alexander is aware that she is comparing being discriminated against for something that you can change with being discriminated against for something you can't change. Mrs. Alexander could change whether or not to put on a mask and move freely anywhere she may choose, where Rosa Parks could not change the color of her skin and could not take any action to change whether she was discriminated against or not. Please share this simple concept with all of Temecula Valley City leadership, so that these false comparisons will end. They are only serving to damage and divide our community and must stop." The next speaker is Jeanette Marie Basi. "The hate speech and untruths leveled against Jessica Alexander must stop. This is our city collectively. Respect Jessica Alexander as our elected official and discourage the rhetoric that she is culturally insensitive. She has the Judeo-Christian values we voted for. We love our community and all people. The inference and outright statements that we are not inclusive and that our community is racist is hurtful and not true. I'm writing to express my concerns that my values and the values of much of the community aren't being represented. I'd appreciate your actions on the following. Last year, the Ready Commission was formed, even though a large majority of citizens in Temecula were not in support of this commission. The council's actions did not reflect the positions of its citizens. Are you allowing yourselves to be intimidated and, as a result, vote against the majority of your constituents? I certainly hope this is not the case. I respectfully ask and demand an action supported by the majority of like-minded Temecula citizens and the Temecula City Council to immediately stop the required training of the Ready Commission and do away with the expense of the Ready Commission and eliminate it. The citizens of Temecula do not want this and did not vote for the Ready Commission. In November, we elected Jessica Alexander and reelected Stu Stewart to the Office of Temecula City Council to represent our values and city government. The behavior and messaging discourages immediate, immediately eliminate the edict of mask-wearing in Temecula. If people don't want to wear a mask, fine. If people don't want to wear, want to wear a mask, that is fine, too. A study published on April twenty, twenty twenty-one in the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health Journal concluded that public wearing of masks increased the risk of bacterial and viral infections, lowered oxygen levels, headache, fatigue of the wearer, psychological effects, social effects. Keep all businesses open with no restricted capacity requirements. These effects happen because of not having the same hygiene standards of those available to workers in a hospital environment. These effects were also amplified when the wearer communicates because of the need to speak louder, to be heard through the mask, thus increasing the moisture and particulates within the mask. Let our citizens choose their preference. I understand that freedom of citizens regarding mask-wearing is controversial. I wear my mask when I am out in public, even though I receive both vaccine shots, but wearing masks should not be mandated by the government. I firmly believe that speech without harassment and being called a racist for standing up for religious beliefs and values is beyond wrong and against our constitution, let alone our city values. Harassment toward our elected official Jessica Alexander Harassment toward our elected official Jessica Alexander should not be tolerated, and as your constituents, you should not tolerate it either. Allowing Ms. Alexander to be called culturally insensitive and or racist has become the cliche term for anyone who doesn't agree with this. This needs to stop, and it starts with you as our representative to make sure it stops infiltrating our community. Together, we support, care for, and love all people, businesses within the community. Let's be a model community for other communities. Thank you for your open hearts and for your time of service, your actions that reflect the values of the people you represent are appreciated. The next speaker is Bruce and Marjorie Trajan. My husband and I have lived in Temecula for the past 21 years. We love our community and all of our neighbors. We have seen our community become more and more liberal and less and less conservative, but we believed in good neighbors and churches always would be open to our thoughts and needs too. Now we are learning that our city council and city manager have turned into a biased, bigoted group who wishes to cancel those members who are more conservative than the others. We find that outrageous and unfair. We are also citizens and should also have a voice in our community. We as citizens voted to elect Jessica Alexander and reelect Stu Stewart, and then learned you decided to form the ready commission to review our city. We are respectfully demanding that you stop the required training of the ready commission. As a matter of fact, it should be eliminated completely. The citizens of Temecula do not want this, and we did not vote for the ready commission. We as citizens also do not approve of demanding masking for everyone. If citizens prefer to wear a mask, so be it. But what religious beliefs and vaccines, it should be up to the individual citizen. It may be that wearing masks for long periods of time may be harmful. We also want to keep all businesses open with no restrictions requirements. We want respect for all board members, including Jessica Alexander. She was duly elected and her conservative value should be welcome. In conclusion, the interference and outright statements that Temecula is not inclusive and that we are racist is very hurtful and not true. We love our community and all of its people. Stop this behavior of messaging and discourage it. Embrace Jessica and the citizens that elected her to the Office of Temecula City Council. She and we strive to engage and make better our beautiful Temecula. The next speaker is Jonathan Chang. Does Jessica Alexander represent Temecula? Does she represent her full district? I don't know, and I hope she doesn't. Last summer, the city council unanimously passed a resolution condemning racism. Now another member of the city council is spewing racist rhetoric. I saw each of your faces and reactions to Jessica's abhorrent remarks. However, not one of you took a stand to condemn her words or even educate her. Is this what Temecula has become? A city that allows racist rhetoric to exist and go unchecked and for racists to sit at the table of government? Why didn't Jessica attend the equity and diversity training every other member of the council attended? Mayor Potem Edwards, if you do not condemn Jessica's actions, that will be a part of your legacy as well. To each of you who plan on running for reelection, if you remain silent, I assure you, I assure you, your silence on the matter will be the loudest part of your challenger's election campaign. The next speaker is Leanne Keer. My name is Leanne Keer, and I have been a Temecula resident for the last four years. I recently learned about some abhorrent statements made at the April City Council meeting by Jessica Alexander. I'm appalled and horrified that an elected official in my city would feel it is okay to compare herself to a civil rights icon like Rosa Parks. That is not acceptable. In no uncertain terms is the requirement for everyone to cover their face for public safety during a pandemic anywhere near the same thing as forcing black citizens to give up their seat on public transportation to a white citizen. For council member Alexander to make that connection shows an unbelievably amount of, an unbelievable amount of privilege and ignorance. I have also learned recently that council member Alexander was the only member on the council that was absent at a workshop regarding ready initiative. This is again unacceptable. Temecula needs to be uplifting, supporting, and protecting its BIPOC community, not trivializing its struggles. I urge the city council and the city to take action. Demand that council member Alexander receive the training that she missed earlier this month or resign from office. I would also like to see a public statement from city leadership denouncing her words at the April council meeting. Hate has no place in Temecula. The next speaker is Julie Gary. Hello, I am Julie Gary, a member of Temecula Unity. I have lived in this valley since 1997, and I am a resident of Temecula. I love this city because I love Temecula. I push for it to be a place where all feel welcome. On August 11, 2020, the Temecula City Council passed a resolution denouncing racism in all its forms and declaring its commitment to the advancement of equity, diversity, and inclusion. A few weeks later, Ready was born and had the most applicants in the city's history. I commend you for committing to this journey and wanting to be a leader in the valley for positive change and growth. On April 6, 2021, the city council, along with the city clerk, city manager, and city attorney, underwent race equity leadership training through the League of Cities. Thank you for acknowledging that many truths and histories were excluded in our schools growing up. It's not our fault for not knowing, but once we know, we can do better. You were brave in being vulnerable and sharing your unique stories and perspectives. However, someone was noticeably absent from this meeting. Jessica Alexander did not show up, and her mission from the training shows that she is not committed to the advancement of equity, diversity, and inclusion. Her values do not align with the resolution denouncing racism. People of color can't opt out of learning about the history of systemic oppression in this country. They live with it daily. It's not enough to say you are not racist. Therefore, you don't need to attend training. It's not enough to say that it's better now than 60 years ago and that racism is over. One must be actively anti racist. Active anti racist acknowledge that there is more work to be done right here in our city. What does it say when an elected official refuses to show up, refuses to learn, listen, and grow? Their silence is deafening. In the next city council meeting on April 13, Jessica Alexander made the following statement. Look at Rosa Parks. She was accompanied, accommodated in the back of the bus, and she finally took a stand and moved to the front because she knew that that wasn't lawful, so she took a stand. At what point in time do we, I'm getting pushed to the back of the bus, this is what I feel like. This statement is, one, historically inaccurate, and, two, extremely insensitive to people of color to equate having the option of wearing a mask, face shield, or attending meetings via Zoom to the systems of systemic oppression faced by people of color in this country. Council member Ron quoted George Santayana in saying, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." Jessica didn't show up to learn about the past, and now the city is once again making news because of racism. Rosa Parks didn't move to the front of the bus, as Jessica stated. Rather, she refused to give up her seat in the colored section to a white man. Jessica is not systemically oppressed for wearing a mask. She hasn't lost any freedoms or liberties. The mask is required by OSHA and is part of the current dress code at City Hall. The guideline is applied equally to everyone regardless of race, class, ability, gender, or sexuality. This false equivalence is abhorrent, and perhaps it wouldn't have been made if she attended the training and understood the implicit bias of her words. In the meeting, she only spoke about how she felt. She continually used I statements in her messaging. This shows that Jessica has an unwillingness to put public service above herself. Her words and actions show that she refuses to listen to people that do not agree with her and shows that she is an ineffective leader. Councilmember Zach stated that decisions we make at the local level truly matter to people that live in and around the city. It is time to make a decision. Does Jessica Alexander represent the values we want in city leadership? Do her words and actions build bridges and unify the city? Or does she cause division? Councilmember Edwards, you referenced the MLA quote, MLK quote. "The ultimate tragedy is not the oppression and cruelty by the bad people, but the silence over that by the good people." You then went on to say that you need to start speaking up and to be brave. This time, the time to be brave is now. I am asking you to be brave and condemn the actions and speech of Jessica Alexander. I am calling on the city council to censure her rhetoric and actions. I'm calling on you to require all council members to make a commitment to the advancement of equity, diversity, inclusion, or resign from office immediately if they are unwilling. Oops, I went dark. Madam Mayor, that is 8:21. If you want me to go to 8:30, I can, but that is 30 minutes right there.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and stop at 30 minutes because that's what we said we were going to do. Then we can get on with the rest of, and complete the rest of the city business, which is not going to take that long. And then we'll come back to the rest of the comments. So what we would do right now is city council report, and I'm going to take mayor's license and make a comment first, especially in light of what we've just heard. So there seems to be a tremendous amount of misinformation. And we all know there's a battle from people on one side battling with people on another side, and we're kind of caught in the middle. But there's a tremendous amount of misinformation. So I'm going to share with you the absolute truth right now. And some of you are going to be surprised. There is no mandatory order to wear a mask, period. No matter where you are, there's no mandatory order to wear a mask by the city council. So council members are free to wear masks or not wear masks. And some have chosen to wear masks and some have not chosen to wear masks. And we accommodate that by moving ourselves. If we're not comfortable with that, then we move. And that is what we have been doing, and that's what we'll continue to do until the state, who established the mandate for masks, tells us otherwise. And there's a reason for that. But it is the state of California that established that mandate. The state of Temecula has no authority to change it. We can't reject it. We can't, you know, and I'll tell you why we can't avoid, we need to comply with it, and here's why. The cities in California that have suffered losses, massive millions of dollars of losses due to COVID, will receive state reimbursement dollars that have come from the federal government to the, in, to the tune of millions. Temecula right now is slated to receive $14 million from the state. If we flaunt the state mandate in somebody's face, then the governor can choose just not to give us any funding. They could just write us off, ignore us. So we are participating in that mandate. So the city of Temecula does not want to give the impression that we're not. Okay, so there is no mandatory mask wearing in Temecula. Every person can choose for themselves, including council members. That's the first thing. The second thing is the ready commission. I heard that a lot. The city council discussed at length, at, and you know, in open meetings, the fact that we would appoint a ready commission. And that was voted on and passed unanimously in Ju, on July 14, 2020. Every city council member discussed it, and every city council member voted in favor of it. They voted in favor of the ready commission. Secondly, every city council member voted in favor of having some sort of diversity training. It was five zero. Every single council member discussed it and thought it would be a good idea. Now, what that, what that training does, it doesn't brainwash anyone. You know, we are free to think as individuals and believe what we want, but it, it is, its intent is to make us aware of how people feel based on maybe what their past is or what their history is. Everyone is different. So I think at this point in time, we just need to, you know, try and be kind and, and not always look for the worst in people. So again, there's no mandatory mask wearing in Temecula. I know you're probably surprised, but that's true. So all that information that's out there for some reason, and I don't know the reason, is false. There's no mandatory mask wearing. The ready commission was discussed and voted on by all five council members and approved on July 14. And all five council members discussed the fact that we wanted to have some kind of training, and that was approved five zero unanimously. So now let me give you an idea of just a really brief overview of what the ready commission will be doing, things like this. First of all, the ready commission has no authority to do, to change anything or take action on anything. They are a recommending body. They do research, they study, they talk to individuals, they network with the community, and then they come back to the council and make recommendations on how we could better communicate, what kind of programs we could add. They make sure that everybody feels welcome at the city. They want to make sure that everybody has access to the city, special needs, seniors. So this is not necessarily a race issue. It is that it's really to make sure that we have, everybody is able to participate. It's an inclusion initiative also. So that's it. And what the, what the ready commission is going to do, they're going to study existing city events, services, and programs and identify opportunities for further diversity and inclusion within those programs. That means, are we reaching everyone? You know, do we get a good representation of the cross section of the community? Do people feel comfortable coming to participate? Is there something we could do better about reaching out or communicating or advertising programs? We're going to identify opportunities for enhanced communication with all residents, including those of various race, ethnic, gender, disability, religious, and or cultural backgrounds and everything you can think of. How can we better communicate to get out the news in the city and to let people know what city events are happening and how they can participate in things like commissions and how they can come to council meetings? We're going to identify improved outreach to all residents on various city efforts and initiatives. So we want them to know what's going on in the city. Do we need to be mailing, you know, ads, putting ads in different kinds of newspapers and different languages? What do we need to do in order to reach more people? And finally, they're going to evaluate policies brought to the commission for consideration at the council's request. That, that commission works at the council's request with consideration for, as an equity lens, making and make recommendations. So if our policies somehow are inadvertently excluding, if we've left out a group, if we've written a policy that makes it harder for one group of people to participate or understand or attend, we're going to change that language to make it easier to understand, or we're going to do a little bit more outreach. So that's what the ready commission is. They can make recommendations to the council. Nothing happens until the council chooses to approve or disapprove, adopt or not adopt those recommendations. The ready commission has no authority to take action on anything. So this, this, let me repeat. No mask mandate, it doesn't exist. It's never existed. Council members can choose whether they want to wear a mask or not. Nobody's forcing anyone. No one has blocked anyone from participating in a council meeting. I've heard that too. That has not happened. No one has said anything to anyone who has decided to wear a mask or not wear a mask. I hate masks, but I'm doing it to preserve the city's compliance with the state mandate because I don't want to take a chance on losing our $14 million in reimbursement costs for our COVID losses. Nobody knows what this governor may do from one minute to the next. And so I want to protect that money for our residents, and I'm not going to take a chance on having the state thinks that we are intentionally not complying. So, you know, and here's, here's the last thing. The views of one member on this council don't represent the views of all the members until we vote on something. And when we vote on something, we agree, like we agreed to form the ready commission unanimously, and we agreed that we needed some kind of training or that we'd like some kind of awareness training for staff, for senior staff and the city council. So the views of one person don't reflect the entire council, and the views of one person also don't reflect the entire views of a community. But that's why we're here. We are here to represent everyone in the community. And we have people from all races, nationalities, ages, abilities in this community. So that's what the ready commission does. We want to make sure we're reaching out and reaching everyone. But you know what? Words mean things. They have power. And people today are so sensitive. We have to be very careful as city leaders about what we say. Just because we don't want to sully the reputation of our city. Words have the power to uplift, they can hurt, and they can, they can lead to a city being broadcast on national news, appearing as though it, you know, is biased towards some races more than others. So we have to be very, very careful. And I think from this day forward, I've always said it starts with me. And I have not said anything, done anything to any council member that doesn't want to wear a mask. In fact, we spent two hours, I spent two hours at the last meeting trying to find ways to accommodate that, not wearing a mask and still being able to sit as a council. So we aren't sitting as a council right now because some choose to continue to wear a mask like I do because of the compliance issue. I don't want to risk the $14 million and because it's a, it's a state mandate. So I'm not going to say anymore, but you're still going to hear, you know, 100 letters, 80 letters saying all these things. And then I have shared with you the truth. There is no mandate to wear a mask. The ready commission was discussed and approved by everyone. It doesn't have any authority to take action. It's a recommending body only. And everyone voted unanimously to have the diversity training. So just in light of what I've just told you, just think about that when you hear the other letters being read. I would ask that you do that. Because I think people are angry because they have either been misled or because they believe incorrect information. So I hope this makes anybody feel better. There's no mandate. So I hope this makes anybody feel better. There's no mandate. We have the freedom to do what we want. Ready Commission and the training were approved by every council member in July. So having said that, we are going to move on right now to council business and get this done so that we can come back and hear the rest of the letters.
Madam Mayor, I think we need to go to other city council reports if they have any.
Oh, yes, that's right. Other city council reports. Sorry. I did, I went on way long, but I apologize. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew. Anybody got a hand up? I don't see anyone. Okay, I want to make sure the right screen. Hold on. There we go. Now I have everybody. So I don't see little hands up. Okay, Jessica, go ahead. Is she on mute? I think you're on mute, Jess.
Am I here?
Yeah, there you are.
Okay, all right. So I just first off want to thank the city for giving me this opportunity. I ended up able to go out with the swag, the hot team, and also community services. And let me tell you all, if you have not yet put your boots on and got into those trees, it was an amazing experience, really, really eye-opening. I was able to work out, work with our homeless outreach, and I learned a lot walking alongside each one of these team members. Not only are they team members, but the really neat thing is I learned that they're family. They're an incredible group. The, the swag team not only has a, has a heart to be able to serve these people, but is so informed on how to serve these people, whether to put them into facilities to help them psychologically or to be able to get them, you know, for drugs or alcohol issues, they are just on it. And I just absolutely love working with them. Same thing with the hot team and the community services. Wooton, Mike Wooton was phenomenal. I learned so much, and actually I already told them already, I'm ready to go out on my next, my next mission with them in a couple more weeks, just to see more. So if you haven't done that, I really, really, I just encourage you to head out there and go with the team. Like again, put your boots on, stretch a little bit before you go. It was a really good experience. Also, city manager, if you could do me a favor, I would love to be able to put on the next agenda that we get an update as to where the city is at with our homeless situation and also how the outreach is really working within our community and how our residents as well can work with the swag team and work in our city as a whole to be able to decrease the amount of the homeless population. Is that possible?
So we have to, we haven't had a homeless update in quite a while, so that's probably a good idea. So council members, can we say that we have consensus to bring that back for a homeless update for responsible compassion? I'm seeing heads nod. Okay, so there you go, Mr. City Manager.
Got it. Will do. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it, Jess?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other hands up? I don't see any. Oh, Matt, there you go.
All right. Well, we're, so, so let's not ignore the issues. Okay, we're going to have, what, close to a hundred public comments this evening? And Madam Mayor, I appreciate, I appreciate deeply what you said earlier today. So I've got a few thoughts. I think my comments are going to address some of the public comments that we're still yet to hear, but we've received by email. So, you know, I wanted to start by addressing some of those issues. I know we haven't heard from them yet, but I think it's important to, you know, place these comments into proper context. First, let me start by saying that, you know, I have expressed this in the past, and I'll say it again, that social media is a dangerous place these days.
Yeah.
People are professing to be experts, posting just a variety of misleading or, or inaccurate information, and often show a flagrant disregard for the truth or even an attempt to access that truth. They jump to unsubstantiated conclusions and fail to simply call us up here at City Hall to fact-check. So one of the things you'll hear later this evening, and let me be abundantly clear regarding these public comments, the answer is absolutely no. We did not meet this evening to give the city manager a raise. It was never on the agenda. It was never part of our dialogue. The assertions that you'll hear are a complete fabrication. They're dangerous, they're reckless, and it's an unfortunate way to incite anger and mistrust in our community and of this city. And as you've seen here tonight, and as you'll see in future comments here tonight, the fabric of our community is definitely frayed. And these negligent keyboard warriors who intentionally pull at those strings are only making things worse. What we did do tonight, though, is discuss the last two years of Mr. Adams' tenure with the city and provide constructive feedback, conduct an inventory of all the things the city has accomplished under his guidelines or, and his guidance. And, and really, this was prompted at his request to ensure that both the old and new council members had a chance to hear from him, provide feedback, and understand his vision moving forward. We know that the next couple of years are critical as we emerge from this pandemic and foster a vibrant and rapid recovery. He's made sure that despite the challenges we've had over the last years, Temecula was protected. We were fiscally responsible and were strongly resilient, right? Him and his staff worked harder this past year arguably than I have ever seen, and it's shown in all the evidence of all the metrics by which we measure progress for this city. And I'll say that proud doesn't even begin to describe how I feel about our city manager. So get your facts straight. Mr. Adams is the kind of city manager every city should hope for. This team that he has created, his staff have made sure that our community was safe, resilient and strong. Under his leadership, our city went above and beyond anyone's expectations of how we could have handled things. Nobody at City Hall retreated. They didn't let Temecula suffer, and they didn't walk away from the fight. They worked hard to keep Temecula safe. You know, and one more thing that Mr. Adams did this past year, he helped the city, the staff and the council respond to the thousands of residents and businesses, visitors and others who struggled with issues related to equity and racism. And in that response, a lot of other cities and communities looked at us, and we became a model for how we can have those difficult conversations, allowing every voice to be heard and allowing us to navigate our way to a more respectful, equitable and inclusive future for our city. I simply don't understand what's so wrong with that initiative. We didn't shy away from it, and we certainly didn't provide generic platitudes or lip service and try and appease a community in the hopes that this would all disappear for another generation. That is strength of leadership. Look, racism is real. It's not a partisan issue. It's not a political issue. It's simply a human issue. We are exploring and exposing, exposing topics and issues that haven't been part of our dialogue before. It's not going to be easy. It's not always comfortable, and it's not without its challenges. These conversations are important. My eyes and ears are open. I see all of you. I hear all of you. Yes, I hear all of you on all sides of that issue. That is our job. I also believe in the Constitution. I believe in freedom of speech, right? But freedom of speech doesn't mean that we only let the voices of the people we agree with be heard, right? As we navigate some of these, I think, very profound and sensitive topics, we have to remember that freedom of speech doesn't mean freedom from consequence. Yes, we pray for tolerance and understanding, right? If we're going to engage in these difficult conversations, we knew this wasn't going to be easy. None of us are perfect. And yes, Madam Mayor, oh my gosh, we cannot forget that our words matter. And even if it's not intentional, our words can hurt. So let's acknowledge it. Don't dismiss it, right? Don't ignore it. You know, I've said this before, and I'll say it again. What is said by somebody who sits on this city council and sits on this dais demands a significant measure of care. As much as we would like to be, to, like this to all be, we know that the dais is not a safe space, right? It's a very public, very hallowed ground that demands thoughtfulness, but absolutely exposes us to very deep criticism. It's important that we remember that we all want the best for our community. I don't think it's naive to believe that this is the absolute truth for everyone sitting here tonight on this city council. And look, disagreement's healthy. Disagreement's necessary, right? Growth is easy when things are simple, but the real progress that matters in our communities is made when things are challenging, when we disagree. And when we do disagree, let's make sure we do it in a civil and professional manner. I will say that, you know, I'm, I'm disappointed lately in, in a lot of what I hear in public comment because a lot of folks are using public comment as a forum to take jabs at one another, take jabs through public comments, saying some very disappointing and, and frankly disturbing things against each other, their neighbors. You know, what are we proving here? That you don't get along, that you're right, that they're wrong? Yeah, we get it, okay? We don't always agree. But that's okay, right? Not everybody shares all of our viewpoints. We should be looking right now for strength in our similarities. And where we have disagreement, this is an opportunity for us to have tough conversations and learn how to grow together. And Mary Ann, I really appreciate what you said about the, the Ready Commission. You know, that was not an easy decision to make. When we created the Ready Commission, when we developed this initiative, it was created with very intentional and very specific language that we all read and we all commented on. We all made sure that we hit the exact tone that we were trying to achieve. "We support the fair and equal treatment of all human beings in a just society, irrespective of race, ethnicity, gender, disability, religious or cultural backgrounds." That's what we said. "We stand with all of our residents." "We recognize the role the city plays in fostering healthy and prosperous environments for all of Temecula, and we're committed to a meaningful advancement of equity, diversity and inclusion." And I want to make a couple of things really clear. First, this initiative is just simply a human thing to do. If a single Temecula resident is hurt, suffering, or is disenfranchised in some way, I think it's our job to help if we can. Persons of color, different religious beliefs, genders, abilities, special needs, seniors, veterans, we should respect all of our neighbors and help where we can. Second thing, some folks are saying that the majority of the committee did not want this. That's simply untrue. There was a very intentional and robust dialogue that went for many weeks. And yes, a lot of people spoke out about this. But there was also a significant outpouring of support from our residents, our businesses, our neighboring cities, and an unprecedented number of diverse and dedicated individuals who actually applied to be on this commission, the largest application pool in the city's history. And look, no one, absolutely no one is forced to take any training. That is just simply false. Each one of, each one of us has a choice to make as to how we choose to represent our community. Individual choices are our own, but they reflect directly back on this city. I personally think our focus has to be on the priorities of the city that include things like public safety, economic recovery, transportation, infrastructure, community services, sustainable growth and community resilience. I think part of those priorities, though, have to include an acknowledgement, not, not an acknowledgement, a commitment to improving the lives of all of our residents and a commitment to being a community that is anti-racism, supports all races, the beauty of diversity, the importance of inclusion, and the goal of equity. Our words have implications. You said this, Madam Mayor. We listen, we learn, and we make informed decisions by doing our homework. That's what we're elected for. It's important to participate in the dialogue. It's important to understand all sides of the issues. Do our homework, right? Keep ourselves open to new ideas or new conversations, as different or uncomfortable or challenging as they may be. No one says you have to agree, but at least let's all show the respect to take the time and listen. My door is always open. Let's make sure we embrace that. It's what I expect of myself, and it's hope, you know, in my mind, what we get out of this city council. No one said this is going to be easy, but everybody needs to understand that our own personal viewpoints are only a small part of this, this equation. They're only a small part of this community. It's important to know that what we say and what we do can have some very direct and very negative impacts on our reputation, our businesses, our residents, our visitors, our economy. We're here to protect all of that and help it thrive. And the trust this community places in all of us is a sacred responsibility that can't be taken lightly. Now let me say one last thing on the mask, no mask issue. Look, I, I said this at the last meeting, I look forward to a time when we're not at odds. This is purely destructive, right? We did not create this situation. And I have said this before at so many meetings, the failure of others and the politics of bad decision-makers at the federal and state level truly comes to rest at local government. This isn't the first time we've had intense debates at City Hall simply because of the failures and an aptitude of others. And it's not going to be the last time, but I am really going to plead with all of you here. Don't allow this negativity outside of City Hall to pollute our city. This was too great of a community to allow that to happen in. No one's forcing a council member to wear a mask. I respect my colleague's position on masks. I don't have to agree. That's okay, right? We don't have to agree with another. That's the brilliance of this whole process. And as a council, last time we met, we decided to stay safe. We decided to respect the state and county orders and follow what I thought was a mutually respected approach to recognizing all of our views and beliefs, at least for the time being, and to revisit this later in June. But for any of this to work, regardless of the issue, we all have to respect the process, and we have to respect each other. We have to respect the meaning of our votes and the policies that are created by the collective action of the council. Whether or not you win or lose on a vote simply doesn't matter. It isn't about us as an individual or our own personal agenda, our own personal politics. It's about us as a community trying to figure out how to work together. This form of government only works if we all have that mutual respect for one another and not ignore decisions or dismiss them when we disagree with an outcome. This is again, a standard I set for myself and what I implore of my colleagues. Where we can, our goal should always be to come together to find the compromise in the middle ground and not be so inflexible that we can't make those incremental little bits of progress. Temecula simply deserves better. This mutual respect and cooperation is exactly what Temecula has been so elegantly famous for in our past. That's why Temecula's special. That's what keeps me optimistic. And that is exactly why I remain hopeful and ready to serve our community. So I hope that collectively here tonight, we really do listen to these public comments. We really do understand each other very carefully and very closely. And we take a moment to hit the reset button here and say, okay, we've learned our, you know, lessons of how we need to work together, how we need to operate. And going forward, let's make sure we respect each other, respect our opinions, and move forward together as amicably as possible.
Thank you, Matt. That was great. Anyone else? Zach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate what you and Mayor Pro Tim Ron were saying earlier. You know, I too would like to acknowledge and really thank everyone for the comments that we received this evening and quite honestly, since, since our meeting two weeks ago. I realize we've only heard thirty minutes of, of comments tonight, but rest assured, you know, we'll hear the balance of those. So I know some folks will probably be disappointed in that, so I just really want to acknowledge that. We also received virtually every comment via email, which I know my colleagues have read, but I, I've read them all. So again, like Mayor Pro Tim Ron, I'll probably speak to some things that maybe we haven't heard yet. Again, the misinformation is just astonishing in the comments tonight and the emails that we're getting regarding meetings and mask mandates and a ready commission and, and even attacks on our city manager. I mean, it's just disappointing. It's disheartening. This isn't who we are as a community. To, to see this is just, it's frustrating. You know, pick up the phone and call, send an email and ask a question before you sort of rant online about something. Our city is what it is because there are many people, starting at the top, all of us here in council, on down to staff, to rank and file employees that work their butts off for the city, day in and day out. And a lot of this divisiveness is just, it's just- And a lot of this divisiveness is just, it's just frankly absurd and it's troubling. And it is just, it's one of those things that you take personally. Because you know the folks inside, you know the work that we're doing, and it's important work. Whatever, you know, whether it's ready or whether it's public safety or whatever it is, we're doing good work. And so people that call that out and try to take it down, it just doesn't sit well with me. So then, you know, we talk about respect, we talk about accountability. As council members, we're held accountable by two entities, right? By the community and then by each other. There's times when we need to publicly acknowledge and also provide comments regarding the behavior of other council members. I've seen this happen in the past over the years and unfortunately, we're here tonight. I don't do that in the media. I don't do that on social media. That's just not who I am. I do that here. I've got two meetings a month where this is a space that I can provide comments to the community in a safe space for me. So you won't see me on NBC News or you won't see me being quoted in the press enterprise. I just don't do that. So with that, I would like to address the comments made by Councilmember Alexander during the last meeting. So Rosa Parks was a civil rights icon that fought to end centuries of systemic racism in America. Wearing a mask is not a civil rights issue. It's not a battle. It's not a civil rights battle. Equating the two is offensive and quite honestly, it breaks down all the work that we've done over the past year. This team, this council, this exec staff went out into the community. We listened. We listened and we listened and we talked and we worked through very difficult and very uncomfortable conversations as a body. And that work in that space is important. When we talk about working in that space, we're all trying to work together to be better, to learn. We all don't know everything. And so, you know, when we take an opportunity to learn something, whether it's a ready workshop, or whether it's community dialogue, or book clubs, or whatever it is, those are powerful tools that provide us elected leaders with a baseline understanding of our path forward as a community. Those are important things that we need to do as elected officials to hear and to listen to the entire community. And believe me, going through my emails and listening to people on both sides of every issue is a daunting task to do that. And you have to truly be open to try to understand what someone's perspective is. Everyone has a different perspective. Everyone has come from a different background, a different life. And it's important for us that we acknowledge that and we try to learn and grow as a community. I think we can all agree that people, you know, that we heard tonight, the emails that we received, that the community is disappointed and hurt by your comments. I would respectfully encourage you to apologize to our community for the comments you made regarding Rosa Parks. We need to be mindful that we represent the entire city, not just a certain faction of the city, but the entire city. It's a diverse city, a city that looks different now than it did ten years ago. And you know what? It's a better city now than it was ten years ago. It's going to be a better city in ten years from now. And that's because we're putting in the work so that people are heard, so that people feel valued and they contribute to our community. At the end of the day, we work for all of the residents here. We also work for the business community, the nonprofit community, community organizations, churches. We work for the entire community and those actions have consequences. Our words have consequences on that community. It's important that we remember again that we're working for that entire community. Our job is doing the business of the city. It's not a political position. This is a nonpartisan role. If you pick up an agenda and you flip through it, we do a lot of good work every two weeks. Some weeks, a little lighter than others. Some weeks are amazing, the work we do for, again, that entire community. So I think at the end of the day, doing the work for the community, this is our job. This is our role. We need to know our role and that's important for us. Not only are we knowing our role here locally, but then think about regionally. Think about the boards and commissions that we all sit on regionally and the impact that that has. Just with respect to Ready, being a leader in that space has empowered other organizations, whether it's schools or other cities or nonprofits or churches, to start having those conversations, right? Those are important conversations to have. And so I just want us to be mindful of that going forward. We have been a leader in the region and we always have, and it's truly my hope that we always will be. Again, we need to just be mindful of those actions locally have impacts for our residents and then the region as a whole. The negative spotlight on our city right now is noise. I mean, it's nothing more than that. It's not improving the lives of one resident. No one's benefiting from the negative spotlight right now. It's just consuming bandwidth and energy, energy that should be directed to improving the lives of our residents. Again, at the end of the day, that is our job. Our job is to work for the residents of our city. You know, it's, I'll just, I'll end on this. It's, there are trying times, right? Like this last year has been difficult. There are things that we do as council members that are tough. This is one of those tough things, right? It's very, it was very easy to sort of, you know, at a point in our life for us to not sort of acknowledge some of these issues and not have these uncomfortable conversations. And I've said it in past meetings, how this has been the year of uncomfortable conversations. But at the end of the day, that friction is only going to make us stronger. It's only going to make us a stronger community. We will only move together stronger and better because of that. So just addressing things, acknowledging concerns that we have with each other and trying to build trust in relationships with each other. So at the end of the day, we can just do the business of the city. That's really what we're here to do. And we should be doing that again for everyone. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Anybody else? Go ahead, Stu.
Okay, so this is going to be short and sweet, but to say I've been on a journey this last year is the understatement of the century. So, and for people who know me, they know where I've come from. So I encourage anybody who wants to get to know me, get to know me. Don't believe or don't trust what someone else is saying, but actually call me, talk to me. And I'll tell you the journey I've been on. And I appreciate all the comments you guys have all made. I mean, Mary Ann, Zach and Matt, you know, when you were talking, Matt, you really kind of hit it on all cylinders. So I think we have an opportunity to move past this and actually learn from it and make our city better because of it. So that's what I'm encouraging everybody to do is, and it seems like a lot of the emails we got is from a lot of misinformation. So I would appreciate people to take that time to actually find out what all this, even the Ready Commission, I would have voted for. So just to let you know, I appreciate the idea of getting to know all the pockets of peoples and people groups in our city. And how can we improve their city experience? How can we improve their life? And that's what the Ready Commission is. So it's not just one particular group. It's everybody that is in those small little pockets of groups across our city. So anyways, that's really all I get to say. You guys pretty much said it all, so. That's it.
Thank you, Stu. Anybody else? All right. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolution. Number two, approve action minutes of April sixth and April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero three, amending chapter fifteen point one oh to update the local development mitigation fee for funding the preservation of natural ecosystems in accordance with the Western Riverside County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, MSHCP. Long Range Project number LR twenty-one dash zero three nine two, second reading. Okay, number five. Approved financial statements for the first quarter ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Number six, authorize city to serve as lead on preparation and submission of Cal Fire Vegetation Management slash Fuels Reduction Grant at the request of Mayor Pro Tim Ron. And number seven, approve cooperative agreement with the County of Riverside to provide fire protection, fire prevention, rescue, fire marshal and medical emergency services for fiscal years twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two through twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. And number eight, approve third amendment to the agreement with Animal Friends of the Valleys, Inc. For Animal Control Services for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. Number nine, approve first amendment to the loan agreement for Los Haciendas Affordable Housing Development between the City of Temecula as housing successor to the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency and Los Haciendas Housing Associates, LP. Number ten, approve funding agreement between the San Joaquin Valley Unified Air Pollution Control District and City of Temecula. Number eleven, approve specification and authorize solicitation of construction bids for pavement rehabilitation program Butterfield Stage Road and Papa Road, PW nineteen dash zero eight. And for the record, I will be abstaining on this one because of my home being located close to Papa Road. So I'll abstain on number eleven. Number twelve, approve minor maintenance agreements for landscape maintenance services with MCE Corporation and Neves Landscaping, Inc. Number thirteen, approve first amendment to the reimbursement agreement with Temecula Valley Hospitality LLC for the traffic signal park and ride access improvements, PW one eight dash one one. Fourteen, approve fifth amendment to license agreement number nine six dash one one zero between City of Temecula and Temica Advertising for Kiosk Directional Sign Program. Number fifteen, approve fifth amendment to the minor maintenance agreement with the Merchants Building Maintenance LLC for janitorial services for city facilities. Number sixteen, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for expanded recycled water conversion project. Number PW seventeen dash twenty-nine. Number seventeen, accept improvement and file the notice of completion for Pachanga Parkway Widening Project from Villa Gilberto to North Casino Drive, PW fifteen dash fourteen. Okay, so I'm abstaining on number eleven. Yes?
And Madam Mayor, let me just say for the record that you do not need to leave the council meeting unless somebody pulls it for further discussion.
Okay.
And we'll note your abstention based on, in the minutes of this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Peter. And anybody else want to pull anything? Matt, number seven?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and I'll accept. Can I go ahead and run this part of the meeting, Peter?
Yeah, no, you're entitled to run the meeting.
Okay.
When the motion is made to approve all of the items except for number seven, part of that motion is to show your abstention on number elevens.
Okay, so.
You can make the motion or second it and vote on.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the balance. We're pulling number seven and let the record show that I'm abstaining on number eleven.
Correct.
I'm moved.
Motion and, did I get a second?
I can.
Okay, got a motion in a second. So Randy, could we have the second roll call of the evening?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Councilmember Ron.
Aye.
Councilmember Stuart.
Aye.
Councilmember Shway.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So let's go back to number seven. And we're going to have a staff report. Matt, are you discussing or what do we do?
I don't know if we need a staff report unless colleagues would like one. I'd just like to make a few comments before we take action on this item.
Why don't you go ahead and do that?
Okay, so, so look, let me start by first saying that Cal Fire does exemplary work for our community. That is absolutely not in question. However, I will say that with the contract we do have with Riverside County, several issues and concerns have come to light in the last couple of weeks that raise some questions for me. And to be clear, I just want to say this has nothing to do with the staff report. Staff did their due diligence, did their job. And the timing of this, I realize, is unfortunate, but it really did take me a while, given everybody's schedules and things, to meet with the right folks, to ask the questions I needed, to really understand the dynamic that's going on. So this is completely on me and I do apologize for pulling the item.
That's okay.
But I think it's important that we do a little bit of digging before we sign another long-term agreement. And so as part of the Public Safety Subcommittee with Mary Ann, I think it's you and me, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like staff to address a few concerns and I'll just lay these out here and I'll send it under separate cover. But we need additional clarification first and foremost, and potentially even some additional language within the agreement that protects the city's investment in its resources and staffing that we pay for. What I'm saying is that this, we may require a bit of an analysis of past mutual aid deployments where our resources are sent out of city for other incidents, basically to understand if we have had the adequate coverage during these major regional and/or state issues. Now, don't get me wrong. I get that when the worst happens, mutual aid is there to ensure the best response possible with the resources available. I get it a hundred percent. However, we also have to ensure that our own city, businesses and residents are protected. And we should have in an agreement some minimum standard of coverage within Temecula that's clearly defined in that agreement. The second item is, we need to make sure that the auto aid agreement, so when our resources are dispatched to, you know, incidents that are outside of the city but short duration, that the auto aid agreement addresses some of the concerns of our resource use and allocation, particularly the prioritization within dispatch for the use of city resources for city incidents and the use of city resources deployed to non-city incidents. Now, I would be asking that this could include an analysis of the frequency and even location of our resources that are deployed outside of the city and the frequency and location of non-city resources being used within the City of Temecula. I want to be able to just understand a little bit better how all of that is working right now. And again, want to emphasize that I get it. Auto aid is critical. We all rely on this as, you know, sister cities and county and so forth. But we know that Temecula carries staffing and resources at substantially different levels than other cities and the county. And so all I'm saying is, I want to make sure that we're not being placed in a position where we are by default of our staffing levels subsidizing our surrounding area simply by virtue of our dedication to that investment. Third item is, we need clarification on how the city is able to maintain four-person staffing, particularly during times when staffing countywide is strained, like with what happened during COVID. And how are the decisions made to pull staff from the City of Temecula to offset lower staffing needs within the county? And what thresholds are we allowing to support the county and our adjacent resources in the event that staffing is strained? The fourth item is, we need additional clarity on mutual aid reimbursement for incidents beyond the first twenty-four hours. First twenty-four hours is free. We all get it. But how is that recovery being allocated when our city resources are deployed longer than twenty-four? I'm sorry, first twenty-four hours, not forty-eight. I want to know what that calculation is and where that reimbursement, when our resources are deployed outside of the city, where that reimbursement is going. Because I don't have a great understanding of that. I also want to get into some meteor issues here about the language in the agreement related to the duration of the existing contract between the county and Cal Fire and our ability to be responsive to any changes the county might make of their own agreement with the state, right? And what I'm really saying is, the county agreement term with Cal Fire doesn't align with the term of the agreement we would be signing with the county itself. So, you know, I need to get definitely a better handle on how that dynamic is working. And then, look, these aren't simple issues. I realize that. And I realize that we're kind of under the gun here a little bit on the timing of getting the agreements in place. So I'd also like to see if staff could, in very short term, work with the county to identify how best to create a short-term interim agreement as this analysis proceeds. You know, language allowing for a simple rollover for a twelve-month, I think, was what was originally in our. You know, language allowing for a simple rollover for a 12-month, I think, was what was originally in our agreements. That language was conspicuously removed in our last agreement with CAL FIRE.
That's right.
So normally, if we weren't able to get this, you know, approved by council, it would just automatically renew for a year at the standards we've already set. That language is gone. I don't understand why it was removed from the contract. It's a little concerning for me. Maybe it was just a simple oversight, but we need something in place temporarily as we try and address some of these concerns. And I'd like staff to be able to work with the county on the best path forward to identify that 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 path. And then there's a variety of other concerns that, you know, we can talk about in the subcommittee, but those are the big ones. And and so I'd like for us to hold off on approval with the consent of my colleagues until another time when when we can get some some better answers to these questions.
Stu, got a question?
Yeah, no, I, you know, this is one of those contracts that, you know, we who don't know anything about fire or staffing, we just kind of go with the flow because, but I had a I had a fireman, I think he's part of the union, email me today and let me know about, you know, the the staffing ratio is is a little off. And so that's something I really kind of want to understand and do a little deeper dive and maybe staff can kind of inform me. So I'm very much in favor of putting this off and let's let's look a little deeper into all of Matt's issues. But I also want to understand the staffing issue and and what number is the number that we're, you know, that will will keep our staffing staff properly. So I'm 100% in favor of that.
Stu, anybody else? So Matt, I noticed, I remembered that we had that interim agreement before, and we've used it before. And so I even wrote, made a note in margin. Where is it? I thought maybe I just missed it. So I'm glad we're going to look at that. So staff, do you understand? I have all the points. I'm sure you have them all, too. Are we good to go? All right, so then what do we want to do, Peter? Do we want to just? Do we have to? Do we need to vote and do something with this item seven?
Well, I think at this point in time, if the consensus is to ask the staff to look at those issues, probably with the priority of looking at a short-term extension, that will be enough. And then once we find out where the county stands, what we can do with the short-term extension, we'll either bring it back to you at the next meeting or the meeting after that to let you know where things stand.
Okay.
But I think I think that's enough to put the ball in motion.
Okay.
I think our goal, our goal will be to to be in front of, back in front of the council before July 1st with some update, you know, and hopefully also with an interim agreement and answers to Mayor Pro Tem Ron's questions as well as Councilman Stewart. So that'll be our goal because the agreement does expire June 30. And I'm hopeful that we can hopefully, you know, get get those answers as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. All right, then, I'm turning pages. That was a, that was the longest consent calendar in a while. Okay, so I am going to want to make sure I haven't skipped anything. All right, so I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting and hand it over to Zach for the Temecula Community Services District meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'll call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, since we remain in the virtual setting, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Director Alexander.
Still here.
Director Edwards.
Here.
Director Ron.
Here.
Director Schwank.
Here.
And Director Stewart.
Jess.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Do we have any public comments this evening?
President Schwank, we do not have any public comments.
Okay, I'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of those rolls, and we will move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 18, approve action minutes of April 13th, 2021. And item 19, approve financial statements for the first quarter ended September 30th, 2020. Entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Move approval.
And a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Would you please take the roll call vote, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Director Alexander.
Hi.
Director Edwards.
Hi.
Director Ron.
Hi.
Director Stewart.
Hi.
Governor Schwank.
Hi, thank you very much, everyone. That passes 5-0. Community Services Director, report. Director Hawkins, do you have anything for me this evening?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. President. Just two quick items to report. The first is, congrats with gratitude from the folks and community services to Commissioner Gario as well. Whether the cameras were rolling or not, with the vast knowledge base and wicked sense of humor, he has always been supportive of our efforts and anything that was good for the city. So continued blessings there. And the second item was really some quick perspective, as this week marks my eighth year here in the City of Temecula, which actually brings me pretty close to 30 years in municipal government. You know, having worked now in three different cities and three different counties, I've seen a lot of administrations. And by far, Temecula has been the best managed city and most impactful and positive experience I've been a part of in my career. That spans not just in community services, but the city manager's office as well. So thanks, Aaron, for your leadership and the opportunity, privilege and blessing of being a part of not just an outstanding executive team, but arguably the best community services department in the region. As we continue to do our part to help create community through people parks and programs. And that, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. That was very nice.
Thank you very much, Director Hawkins. We appreciate you and the kind words. Thank you. General Manager, report this evening.
Nothing further, Mr. President. Appreciate your kind words. Thank you.
Any comments from the directors this evening? All right, seeing that, we're going to move to adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. We're adjourned.
All right, then I'm going to call to order the meeting of the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Director Alexander.
Here.
Chair Edwards.
I, I mean, here.
Director Ron.
Here.
Director Schwank.
Here.
Director Stewart.
All here.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any SARDA public comments.
Okay, then we'll move on to the SARDA consent calendar. All matters listed in the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the successor agency to the redevelopment request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 20, approve financial statements for the first quarter ended September 30th, 2020, and I will accept a motion.
Motion. Second.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Director Alexander.
Hi.
Chair Edwards.
Hi.
Director Ron.
Hi.
Director Stewart.
Hi.
Director Schwank.
So Executive Director, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Board of Directors, anything? Nothing? All right, then, I'm going to adjourn this to the next meeting, which will be on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, at 5:30 PM. Okay. Anything for the Housing Authority or the Temecula Public Financing Authority, which is the Tepafah?
No.
Oh, yeah, so I'm going to, we do have the Tepafah, so I'm going to call that one to order, and could we have the roll call? I bet everybody's still here.
Director Alexander.
I am still here.
Chair Edwards.
Me, too.
Director Ron.
Yes, I'm here.
Director Schwank.
Here.
Director Stewart.
Hi.
Do we have any Tepafah public comments?
We do not have any Tepafah public comments.
All right, so moving on to the consent calendar, and the disclaimer is the same that I just read a minute ago for the previous agency. So item number 21 is approve action minutes of April 13th, 2021. And number 22, adopt ordinance number TPFA 2021-01, levying special taxes within Temecula Public Financing Authority Community Facilities District Number 20-01, Heirloom Farms, generally located west of Date Street between Inez Road and Temecula Center Drive, and this is the second reading. Okay, so could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
And? Come on, you guys, we do this every time.
I said second.
Okay. All right, all in favor. Oh, we need to go ahead and read, do the roll call, please.
Director Alexander.
Hi.
Chair Edwards.
Hi.
Director Ron.
Hi.
Director Stewart.
Hi.
Director Schwank.
Hi.
Okay, so nothing on Executive Director, Directors, anything? I'm assuming no. So I will adjourn to the Tepafah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
May I ask for a five-minute recess?
Uh, sure, let's take a five-minute recess.
Please.
And so it's nine, I have 9:25, be back at 9:30.
That's good, you're amazing.
I actually need one, too. So thank you.
I read.
Here we go. Come on, you guys, we do this every time.
I said second.
Okay.
Pat Thomas.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Edwards and council members. I'll be presenting this item to you and just as a preface to this presentation. This resolution does not involve any change in the current Tump fee. So we're not, we're not proposing any change in the fee that's currently charged, but rather correction to an administrative error that was included in the prior resolution that was adopted by the council. So before I get to that, I'll just give you a very brief history of how we got to this point. So the Tump fee that was in effect prior to July 1st of 2020 are the amounts that you can see on the screen. The fee is, is a lump sum amount that's charged for individual, single family residential units and multifamily units and an amount per square foot for industrial and commercial development. So next slide. So in 2020, the WR cog executive committee and subsequently the city council approved a resolution to implement a construction cost index increase in the fee. And that's essentially an inflationary increase based on increases in construction costs. And that fee was adopted and it was decided to implement that fee as a phased implementation for single family residential development. So only part of the fee increase for single family residential was implemented between July 1st of 2020 and December 31st of 2020. The full increase was implemented for multifamily residential as well as the industrial and commercial projects. So next slide. So the full phased in amount of the increase was implemented for single family residential beginning January 1st of 2021. And you can see that number on the screen. It was $9,810 per single family unit as well as the amounts for multifamily, industrial and commercial development. However, in the previous resolution that was passed, there was an end date to this increase that was listed as being from January 1st, 2021 to June 30th of 2021. And that was not the intent. The intent was that fee would continue indefinitely until any further change would be made in the fee. So this resolution essentially removes that end date of June 30th of 2021 and indicates that this fee would be in effect indefinitely going forward. So that concludes the staff report and I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, do we have any questions? No, no, okay. In that case, I am going to open the public hearing. And do we have any comments, Madam City Clerk? You're muted, Randy. Well, I think if we had city comments, there she comes.
Sorry, no, we have no comments on this.
Okay, so no public comments, so going once, twice. I will close the public hearing and we may discuss or I would accept a motion.
Move the item.
Motion in a second, could we have roll call please?
Councilmember Alexander.
Hi.
Mary Edwards.
Hi.
Councilmember Ron. Councilmember Stuart.
Hi.
Councilmember Schreink.
Okay. So, city council business item number 25. Approve agreement for consultant services with applied development economics and appoint blue ribbon committee members for the update to the quality of life master plan. Excuse me. So could we have a staff report please?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Can you see the slide on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the agenda item is for the quality of life master plan contract. But what we wanted to do was provide some context for where this fits into the general plan update. So let's see, did the slide advance? Okay, there we go. So a little background on the state law. A general plan is the city's blueprint for future growth and development and is required to contain nine elements. And those nine elements are land use, open space, conservation, housing, environmental justice, circulation, noise, air quality and safety. And these elements are important as they also relate to the Q L M P or the quality of life master plan. Our current status on the general plan. The last comprehensive update of the general plan was in 2005, but the plan has been amended over the years to change land uses, reflect policy changes and to meet statutory requirements. And a couple of recent examples of amendments include the Altair specific plan and more recently an affordable housing overlay zone or A H O Z to expedite the construction of affordable housing. So over the last few months, we've met with the general plan update subcommittee consisting of Mayor Edwards and Mayor Pro Tem Ron. And two key takeaways from our meetings and specific direction from the subcommittee include phase the update over time using grant dollars whenever possible. And second, update the quality of life master plan first as the foundation for the general plan. So the Q L M P is the foundation for the general plan. The Q L M P is a broad level planning document and we're all very familiar that identifies the city's six core values. And those core values range from a healthy and livable city over to an accountable and responsive city government. So the idea is to update the Q L M P through public input and later update the general plan elements and organize them under the core values that show in here. This will ensure consistency between the documents with the Q L M P serving as the foundation and organizing document. This is an illustration of our general plan update process. As you can see, there are several work tasks that have been broken down into four phases. I have a slide for each phase, but what's important to note is that we are in phase one and moving to phase two with the quality of life master plan update. Both phase one and two are 100% grant funded. And the entire process is expected to take five years. However, we're already over a year in and making additional progress. And in my estimation, I think we're at just over three years left on this entire process of a general plan update. So a slide for each of the phases, I'll go through these quickly. The housing and public safety elements are in progress. Staff is working with the Novo Consulting on both. And these two general plan elements will be coming back to the city or going before the city council in late summer or early fall as the state requires action on these two elements by October of 2021. Also, this past May, the city's T I A guidelines were amended to measure vehicle miles traveled or V M T as opposed to level of service for Sequo. This was another state requirement and was definitely necessary to do this before diving into a full general plan update. Phase two includes four work tasks. As I mentioned, we're moving into phase two. The Q L M P is at the beginning of the process and includes that. It also includes a true north or community survey. And the survey results will be presented to the blue ribbon committee to help inform the discussions and any of their recommendations. We're also working with Fair and Peers on a baseline evaluation of our circulation network. And that process looks at what's built or what's on the ground versus what's planned in the circulation element in order to help us prioritize future street connections to improve traffic flow around the city. We'll also be developing a complete streets document to consider all modes of transportation in our street design, including walking, biking and transit and G I S mapping to help us prepare for the general plan update. Phase three is strategic and intended to help us expedite phase four. Phase three is expected to last just a few months. But this phase will include an exercise where we reflect on the city's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges by asking ourselves some questions. Some of those might include what do we learn during the quality of life master plan update? What do we learn from our baseline V M T evaluation? And are there any jurisdictions or organizations that we should work with in the future? We'll also establish a general plan advisory committee or a G pack and develop an R F P and consultant selection committee. And then finally, in phase four includes the general plan update and the E I R. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. What I'd like to do is introduce Doug Svenson and Andy Pendoli, our consultants on the Q L M P update. And they have a graphic that will explain that process and what we're about to begin. So I think I'll turn it over to Doug. Doug, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Welcome Doug and Andy.
Thank you very much. And you'll put up the next slide, I think. Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm Doug Svenson, president of Applied Development Economics. Our firm worked with the city to prepare the original quality of life master plan. We're very pleased to work with the community again on this update. We've designed a comprehensive process to accomplish the update, which we'll highlight for you this evening. Across the top of this graph shows the backbone of the process, which is the blue ribbon committee, which council will be asked to form. And the general plan update subcommittee has recommended a structure for that committee, which we'll discuss in a little bit. But we have worked out a process of six meetings over a period of six to seven months to systematically work through all the core values and the objectives and indicators with the blue ribbon committee to update the plan. And then the draft plan will also be presented to all of the city's boards and commissions and then ultimately come to city council for review and approval. We can have the next slide. In addition to the blue ribbon committee, we have a number of other activities planned to solicit community input and stakeholder input. And on the next slide, which I'm not seeing yet, but maybe, oh, there it is. At the bottom of this slide, I just want to draw your attention to the fact that in addition to all the public input, we will also be updating all of the data and indicators and analysis in the Q L M P and providing that through the blue ribbon committee and the community as we go through the process. So the process will be data driven in addition to the input process. And we're very pleased to team with M I G group, who is a very experienced and highly respected firm with expertise in community engagement. And as I mentioned, we've outlined a number of activities to solicit a wide range of community and stakeholder input during the process. So I'd like to have Andy Pendley highlight some of the features of that community input process. Andy?
Thank you, Doug, I appreciate it. And I think I can be brief here because on the next slide, I think we can see that in addition to the blue ribbon committee really being so integral here to guiding the process, it's really critical that we have a multi-pronged approach to engaging the breadth of your city residents and stakeholders throughout this process. So we're proposing a really robust approach where we have really strong web presence, social media engagement to reach a broader community and bring them in to a really a breadth of activities. And you kind of see in the middle, the green color items speak to that. So and that includes all of you on city council. We envision coming back to you approximately midway through the process to check in with you on how what's emerging with these core values and get some updated perspective from you. But we see a wide range of things with, with community members. Questionnaires, for example, online to be able to get response and thoughts on, on the core values. Good old fashioned community workshops, some of those probably in virtual as we are here now over Zoom. Some people are actually really appreciating the virtual workshops, but we're hoping by this summer, it sounds like fingers crossed, we might be able to do some in-person workshops. Again, we'll see how things progress. And but we're also seeing a lot of other activities by going out to your community events, farmers markets, having a booth at spaces like that to connect with community members there. Community presentations to your civic and community-based organizations, school-based curriculum to be able to bring the, bring this effort into schools, into classrooms, working with your educators. And so it's, it's really a wide range of activities that we want to make sure we can try and reach the, the full range of community members. But all of that importantly has to filter up back up, if you will, to the, the process with the blue ribbon committee as well. We don't see them as different processes. They need to be well integrated. At the end of the day, creating a Q L M P that is really reflective of the community's wide range of values, the issues and the opportunities we're seeing for your future. So really excited to be back, to be back to work with you on this process.
Thank you, and I will turn it back to Matt to discuss the blue ribbon committee in more detail.
Okay. Thanks Doug and Andy. So to continue, this is the list of the subcommittee recommended blue ribbon committee. And that will consist of the general plan update subcommittee, Mayor Edwards and Mayor Pro Tem Ron, and then a representative from each of the commissions and boards. And those members include Lynne Turley Trejo from Planning Commission, Ross Jackson from the Old Town Local Review Board, David Maddox from Public Traffic Safety, Kathy Sizemore from Community Services Commission, and Denise Wilson from the Ready Commission. In addition, so similar to the original blue ribbon committee, the subcommittee also recommended a diverse group of stakeholders representing a variety of interests. And all of these people have been contacted and are aware of the agenda tonight. Hopefully they're still, still watching. Most have responded and are very excited to participate. And just a couple have had to decline. The emails have been coming in kind of yesterday and today. So Mark Encelmo from our Nicholas Foundation has sent us an email and had to decline for personal reasons.
Oh.
Yeah, we received another email from Roger, Roger Schultz at M S J C or Mount San Jacinto College. And he recommended and designate me Dr. Jeremy Brown, who's the deputy of instruction and a local resident. And then Tom Ainsworth from Caltrans has a couple of different people in mind that he would like to appoint, but he's working with his staff on an appointment there. So I guess that concludes the list with Dr. Jeremy Brown as a replacement and a future replacement from Caltrans. And then I think what we'd like to do with your permission, of course, is work with Avet Martinez from T C S D to find a replacement for Mark to represent the special needs community. But that, I guess, concludes the presentation. And we can talk a little bit about the blue ribbon committee before we get into, I guess, staff's formal recommendation on the contract and the blue ribbon committee.
Matt, did we cover Juan Carlos Duran and Aaron and Tammy Marine and, and all the ones that are down at the bottom underneath Tom Ainsworth?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure. Okay, so are there any questions? No, not yet.
I guess with that, Mayor Edwards, I'd like to just conclude with our staff recommendation. And that would be to approve the contract with A D E to update the quality of life master plan. And then approve the blue ribbon committee list as recommended by the general plan update subcommittee.
Okay, and we're going to have to make exceptions for the substitutes that are pending. So any motion that we make will assume that Caltrans will have a seat at the table, I hope. And so we'll hold that, we'll hold that place for them. Any questions about this, any comments, concerns? Go ahead, Zach.
And no question, just a brief comment. Just want to thank the subcommittee and staff for putting together what looks like a very diverse blue ribbon committee. So just appreciate all the hard work that went into making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? All right, if there's no further discussion, I will accept a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion in a second, Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
Hi.
Mayor Edwards.
Hi.
Councilmember Ron.
Hi.
Councilmember Stuart.
Hi.
Councilmember Schreink.
Hi.
Okay. Good job. So we're down to city manager report, Mr. City Manager.
Nothing tonight, further tonight, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, we still have public comments. Come back.
Yes, we have many public comments coming after this. And Peter, city attorneys.
We had a closed session tonight, but there were no, there's no reportable action from the closed session.
Okay, then we are going to go back to the, oh, I'm not, don't need the gavel. We're going to go back to the public comment portion and finish the public comments. And there are a lot. Maybe 80 left.
I, I'm not sure, Madam Mayor, I'll just start reading and they'll, and they're three minutes each. I was able to identify some duplicates that were exact. So I don't know if I got all of them, but we'll do our best here. And the, the next public comment is Malia Williamson. I am writing to strongly condemn the views expressed by Jessica Alexander at the city council meeting on April 13, 2021. Throughout the meeting, we could see her shaking her head as facts were being shared regarding the current public health crisis concerning COVID-19 and a lack of empathy regarding what this country has gone through in the past year in dealing with the pandemic that was poorly handled to begin with. Her anti-masker views were not only self-serving and misleading, but also dangerous for the constituents she represents. If she doesn't possess the flexibility to understand others' viewpoints and the ability to adapt to an ever-changing environment, which will always be the case in any environment, maybe needs, maybe she needs to go find another job. To add to the injury towards the end of the meeting, she compared herself to Rosa Parks. How dare she? These comments were insensitive and showed her lack of understanding of the civil rights movement as a whole. This is a week after she was the only one who refused to show up to the race equity and leadership training. I see her unfit to serve in public office and I am asking for her immediate resignation. The next speaker is Valerie Hernandez. I want and request in-person meetings open to the public. In addition, per the protection granted us by ADA, those in attendance who have exemptions will not be wearing a face covering or shield. I do not approve of any pay raise whatsoever for Aaron Adams. I support both Stu and Jessica and their stance against wearing face coverings. I support Jessica Alexander's request of having in-person council meetings instead of continuing meetings through Zoom. I feel very strongly of the importance of face-to-face interaction and eye contact in establishing connection, trust and respect. I feel very strongly that the council will be more effective by working together face-to-face.
Randy, if you could hold for a second, I need a motion to extend. It's 10:05 right now, let's, let's extend to, well, let's start with 10:30 and that's optimistic, but we'll go from there and then we'll extend again, like four times.
I'll move.
Okay.
I will do my best, Madam Mayor.
Sorry.
The next speaker is Joy Wilson. We believe this local hate group in Temecula has taken it too far with their accusations of Jessica. Rosa Parks belongs to all of us as an inspiration to stand up for what you believe in, no matter what. Jessica had no ill intent of bringing up Rosa's story. This local group is pushing everything to be racist when it is not. We are over their games and antics. They are nothing but an immature violence inciting hate group, tackling every tiny word and twisting it to their agenda. There are thousands in this town and millions across the country who believe the mask mandate needs to go for many reasons. We respect and support Jessica and her stance. The, okay, so the next comment was submitted by several folks. So I'll go ahead and read the comment once and then read the names of the individuals that submitted identical comments. This particular comment is is by Denise Grandy. I'm writing to express my concern that my values and the values of much of the community aren't being represented. I'd appreciate your actions on the following. Last year, the Ready Commission was formed even though a large majority of citizens in Temecula were not in support of this commission. The council's actions did not reflect the positions of its citizens. I respectfully ask and respectfully demand an action supported by the majority of like-minded Temecula citizens, the Temecula City Council, to immediately stop the required training of the Ready Commission, do away with the expense of the Ready Commission and eliminate it. The citizens of Temecula do not want this and did not vote for the Ready Commission. In November, we elected Jessica Alexander and re-elected Stu Stewart to the Office of Temecula City Council to represent our values and city government. The hate speech and untruths leveled against Jessica Alexander must stop. This is our city collectively. Respect Jessica Alexander as our elected official and discourage the rhetoric that she is culturally insensitive. She has the Judeo-Christian values we voted for. We love our community and all people. The inference and outright statements that we are not inclusive and that our community is racist is hurtful and not true. Stop this behavior and messaging, discourage it. Immediately eliminate the edict of mask-wearing in Temecula. If people want to wear a mask, fine. If people don't want to wear a mask, that is fine too. A study published on April 20, 2021 in the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health Journal concluded that public wearing of masks increased risks of bacterial and viral infections, lowered oxygen levels, headache, fatigue of the wearer, psychological effects, social effects. These effects happen because of not having the same hygiene standards of those available to workers in a hospital environment. These effects were also amplified when the wearer communicates because of the need to speak louder, to be heard through the mask, thus increasing the moisture and particulates within the mask. Let our citizens choose their preference. Keep all businesses open with no restricted capacity requirements. Together, we support, care for and love all people and businesses within the community. Let's be a model community for other communities. Thank you for your open hearts and for your time of service. Your actions that reflect the values of the people you represent are appreciated. So that was by Denise Grandy. And then the same was submitted by Dee Ober. The same was submitted by Connie Velasenor. The same was submitted by Janine Plano. And the same was submitted by Claudia Thunel. The next speaker is M. Golden. I am a resident of Temecula. Equating mask-wearing to the struggle for equal dignified human rights is frankly inflammatory idiocy. Idiocy, that Alexander was absent from diversity training speaks loudly to her closed mind. Those who don't learn from history end up repeating the same sorry mistakes. For a health substantive, meaningful, healthy city, I call for Alexander to be sanctioned for inflammatory useless rhetoric. The next speaker is Laura Nowinski. Life has been crazy enough without adding Ready Commission training to the mix. Critical race theory is racist to the core. Read Hillsdale College's article on it. It only breeds hatred and victimhood as well as instability and chaos to usher in the Marxist revolution desired by those already in power, Democrats, academia, big tech, mainstream media and the billionaire athletes. Be wiser than they are. Consult the Great Barrington Declaration of esteemed scientists and public health officials around the globe and eliminate the wearing of masks. The air quality within the mask is toxic to the individuals wearing them. Let's be to the, let's march to the beat of better drummers. The next comment is from Gillian Larson. My name is Gillian Larson and I have been a resident of Temecula for 20 years. I attend or watch city council meetings frequently to hear what the city is doing, to feel the pulse of the community and know what is happening in our city. I found the agenda item during the meeting of April 13 to vote on opening the meetings to in-person sessions. In my mind, take a turn for the worse in so many ways. I found Ms. Alexander insinuating that the council and city staff had not been productive over the past year because of virtual meetings, insulting and indicating how little she must know about what has been achieved through hard work over the past year and all city departments for the good of Temecula. I am fully aware there are different views on masks and other health and safety guidelines to help prevent the spread of COVID. After hearing the scientific and legal information presented by the city council and council member Ron, I considered it shameful for a council member to blatantly express personal views and intentions from the dais in a public and evergreen setting. In the last few minutes, Mrs. Alexander compared herself to Rosa Parks, which was abhorrent. This type of behavior from a council member has once again and will continue to put Temecula in the national spotlight, representing who we all are in Temecula, totally false. Thank you for the virtual opportunity and privilege to express my opinion. The next speaker is Michelle Naren. No raises for anyone on city council, no raises for city manager. This is excessive when so many of us have suffered financially this past year, no monetary increases. The next speaker is Sylvia Gray. I'm a taxpayer in the city of Temecula and I'm in opposition to pay raises to the city council. They make enough money as it is. The next speaker is, oh, that was another comment from Sylvia Gray. City manager makes too much, too much money already. The next speaker is Vivian Crowe. Again, Temecula City Council is in the headlines for statements that are at best insensitive to the current client. Again, Temecula City Council is in the headlines for statements that are at best insensitive to the current client in the community. Council members need to be aware of the impact of their thoughtfulness, of their thoughtless and reckless remarks and the shadow those words cast on the entire community. Words matter. Please address this ongoing issue. The next speaker is Kevin. I understand there will be a meeting to determine pay raises. With many folks still jobless and businesses struggling with closure on limited capacity and parents struggling to manage their family and education, I am requesting a cease to all pay raises. Has the city seen an increase in revenue or reduction in expenses to justify pay increases? Thank you for your attention to this matter. The next speaker is Lisa Skinner. It is time for the city council to open up city hall that we, the people, pay for. It is time for in-person city council meetings that allow for the general public to be in attendance. Under both OSHA and the California Health Department regulations, no one with a medical exception will be required to wear any type of face covering to attend these public meetings. I am sure I do not need to remind the council of the ADA laws protecting my rights. I am against Aaron Adams or any other city official receiving any sort of compensation increase. I have spoken to many local business owners and not one has heard from Aaron Adams to see how they are doing. Not one has been asked how Aaron Adams can be of service to them. But yet Aaron Adams has control of how money is being spent. I support Jessica Alexander's requests of having in-person council meetings and feel very strongly that the council will be more effective by working together face-to-face. The importance of eye contact is undeniable. Eye contact shows respect and reflects our sincerity and warmth and honesty. Eye contact shows the speaker you understand what they are saying. Eye contact is powerful in creating long-lasting bonds. Eye contact evokes presence and projects confidence, self-esteem and assertiveness while speaking. Interpreting body language is also a crucial part of the communication process. I have been on your Zoom city council meetings. I see council members appear distracted. I see council members looking away from their screens. I see council members with blank looks on their faces that can be interpreted as indifference. Whether you care or not, the people of this community need to be able to make eye contact with each of you in expressing our concerns and grievances. To Jessica Alexander, keep fighting. I feel compelled to remind each of you that you work for me and every other community member. We are your boss and your only concern should be how to do your jobs in a way that honors, respects and edifies the lives of your constituents. That means no special favors. That means equal opportunity for all. That means when we win, we win together. And that means when we lose, we lose together. That means not expecting the public to lose businesses, lose life savings, lose the ability to put food on the table and a roof over their heads, while servants like Aaron Adams make four hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year with his wife pulling in another hundred and fifty thousand dollars without missing one paycheck. The local business community is feeling betrayed and that should weigh heavy on all your minds. You all have a choice. You all took an oath to defend the Constitution. I suggest that you start by actually reading that document. Then I expect you, as your servants, as our servants, to do your job. The next speaker is Victoria Cole. I would like to formally request that raises made for city council members be put on hold and reassessed along with the needs of the cities. As a family member of a small business owner in Temecula, this last year has been brutal to so many. Many have had a decrease in income, lost jobs and all livelihoods. To improve trust and transparency as well as support by community members, the move to increase an already high salary should be explained to our community. So many are suffering because they were forced to shut down with no choice to ignore it. How can such a large raise for a city council member be justified in any way, but specifically during this day and age of COVID economic suffering? Can you explain why this is a closed meeting and what protocol is used to justify such large increases? The next speaker is Jason Lund. Please immediately open all council meetings to the public. All persons that are categorized as protected under ADA will not be wearing any face coverings. We are in need of the leadership that may be exhibited by such an action. I disapprove wholeheartedly with any increase in compensation for Aaron Adams in any way. His current inability to properly serve the community is borderline reprehensible in these trying times. Simply closing down city buildings and refusing the owner's access is no way to serve the voters. I fully support council members Stu and Jessica for their willingness to face opposition in their refusal to wear any mask. Strength of will is a necessary thing these days in our elected officials. Please begin in-person council meetings immediately so there is a rebuilding of cohesiveness among the elected members. Keeping an in-person visual presence and a visual contact in proximity to others will allow for a more sincere and certainly more forthright representation of all statements made during meetings. The next speaker is Christina Harrington. I believe you are making a grave and all-too-common error. You have mistaken the pandemic-induced silence of the citizenry for consent and agreement. Politicians have for years taken the silence of those busy with their lives and families for consent and shame on us citizens for being complacent and not making our voices heard. I have been a silent crisis-following conservative Temecula resident for over twenty years. There are thousands more like me and I guarantee continuing on the dark and destructive path you have chosen will bring us out in droves. Jessica Alexander was elected to city council by the residents of Temecula. She's doing exactly what we elected her to do, standing up for us. You say embrace diversity. Well, here it is. Or does the new definition of diversity only apply to skin color and exclude thoughts, beliefs, values and worldviews? Critical race theory is anti-God, anti-Christian and against all that our country stands for and holds dear. It is nothing more than Marxism in disguise. Marx pitted worker against capitalist and encouraged violent revolution. In the simplest of terms, critical race theory pits dark-skinned people against light-skinned people. I believe it would be criminal to coerce, shame or demand that Jessica Alexander, against her will, be subjected to ready training dogma. Forcing someone into re-education training brings to mind rather dark chapters of history, wouldn't you say? The Ready Commission is a Trojan horse designed to infiltrate and infect our local government with these anti-American and anti-Christian neo-Marx doctrines. Temecula residents didn't ask for it, didn't vote on its creation and don't want it. We are and have always been an inclusive and welcoming community. We do not need to have our children taught to judge or rank one another or themselves based on ethnicity. What happened to the biblically grounded teachings of Reverend Martin Luther King? Content on, of char, content on, of character, not color of skin. These right and true ideals seem to have been cast aside in favor of low thinking. I have a proposal, rather than focusing on diversity. Let's as a city strive for excellence. Excellence is a standard that will challenge people of all backgrounds to achieve their highest potential. Shouldn't that be our goal? In accordance with striving for excellence, we need to be a city that does not fall prey to false beliefs based in fear. Mask-wearing has now been proven to be useless in stopping the spread of COVID nineteen. I will link studies below. Not only do they fail at their intended purpose, they are causing psychological and physiological harm. Requiring mask-wearing of the city council members only serves to perpetuate fear and false propaganda. Mask-wearing should be at the discretion of the individual, not mandated. Continuing to keep our businesses and restaurants muzzled by mask and capacity restrictions is only serving to cast economic despair and fear on our population. States that choose to remain open throughout the pandemic have fared better than those that shut down in health and economic metrics. Temecula, the city of excellence, needs to be a shining beacon of freedom in our state. In closing, I strongly urge you to stop this unfounded persecution of Jessica Alexander. She represents our God-centered values. Distance yourselves from forced re-education training. This is downright evil. Everyone is entitled to disagree. Immediately disband and defund the Ready Commission. There are Trojan horse on destruction. Eliminate forced mask-wearing at council meetings and everywhere. It is a false science, scientism, not science. Open Temecula, all businesses and restaurants for business as usual. Science supports it and courage is contagious. The next comment is from April Texira. I'm writing to let you know that I am adamantly against Aaron Adams receiving any type of pay raise in the annual performance review. Some citizens of this town took a hard hit to their livelihood, job losses, small business closures, thanks to the year-long shutdown lockdown that was forced upon in the name of coronavirus. Some of us have worked throughout the entire pandemic, coming in contact with thousands of people and have yet to receive any type of incentive raise or hazard pay. Until our city has returned to normal, I vote that no one in charge of the city nor their staff should receive raises. If we are handing out raises, let's start with our actual public servants not making a fortune from taxpayer monies, law enforcement. Since their raises are controlled by the county, we, the citizens, will gladly accept a refund in lieu of city's official raises. The next speaker is, it just references event concerts. Randy, I am not in support of any Temecula city officials of any money raises. Mr. Aaron Adams is to be included in this. For the last year, Temecula businesses have been stripped down. The next speaker is Red Grease. Um, it's pretty lengthy, so I'm going to start the three minutes.
Okay.
The recent political attacks against a member of the city council for finding inspiration by civil rights icon is much ado about nothing. This is all being orchestrated by self-appointed so-called social justice activists like local leftist Julie Gary in order to sow even more political division and angst within our community and throughout our country. That an elected member to the city council finds inspiration by the actions of Rosa Parks is laudable. Why is it now, all of a sudden, an elected city leader cannot cite the worthy actions of somebody like, like Rosa Parks? Is it because the council member is religious or patriotic or white or female? We are all Americans. We should all especially look to those noteworthy Americans for inspiration who have sacrificed and made great contributions to our country, particularly when a thought or idea in such political climates may go against the current conventional wisdom. Julie Gary and her ilk demonstrate their ignorance by suggesting that there is no connection whatsoever between Rosa Parks's stand for civil rights and the desire of millions and millions of fellow citizens to do away with restrictive mask edens and social gathering bans as dictated by our California governor. The simple truth is that the US Supreme Court had ruled five times against our California governor because his dictates were indeed violating the civil rights of those Californians seeking to exercise their naturally ordained First Amendment freedoms. The court has ruled time and time again that the governor cannot shut down churches and other social and political gatherings because he has no authority to do so. Similarly, Rosa Parks sought justice when she was denied her seat on a bus in the democratically-controlled Jim Crow south of last century. The Jim Crow policies that existed then were little more than government-imposed dictates that were ruled as unconstitutional. If anything, Gavin Newsom's anti-civil rights actions this past year should entitle him to join the ranks of fellow unconstitutional political demagogues like Woodrow Wilson or Beau Fabius and Beau Connor, all Democrats. So instead of letting these race baiters and political grievance hustlers continue to try to spread dissension, angst and recriminations throughout Temecula, let's remember that we should honor, celebrate, invoke and seek inspiration from all American leaders and heroes of virtue, of conscience and of bravery. These fellow Americans come from all walks of life and from all natural origins of class, race and creed. Much like the banners honoring veterans that are periodically displayed throughout Temecula, these honorees transcend race, class, gender and creed. I would highly recommend that local agitator and grievance monger Julie Gary make an appointment with the Ready Commission so that she can learn some tolerance herself as well as understanding race baiting is just as bad as racism. Note, I have BCC, the email contact of the Ready Commission, so that they can perhaps expect a call from Ms. Gary in the near future for her remedial counseling. Lastly, I once again strongly encourage this esteemed city council to fully reopen city hall and city council meetings to the public as quickly as possible. That's three minutes. The next speaker is Christine Fontes. As I wrote to you in August, there is no need for the Ready Commission. This commission is a waste of time and taxpayer money. It is divisive and does not promote peace in our community. The whole premise on which the commission is based on is unfounded and riddled with lies. It is being pushed by a small group of people with an agenda that will ultimately destroy our city. The Ready Commission should be eliminated. Jessica Alexander was duly elected to represent District Two and Temecula City Council. As such, she deserves our respect. Mrs. Alexander and many of her constituents have conservative values. However, that does not make them a racist. Please be aware that just because one throws the R-word around to intimidate her or us, we will not stop proclaiming truths nor stopping, nor stop exposing the lies being perpetrated in our community. All smear campaigns against Mrs. Alexander include the rhetoric that she is culturally insensitive and must, that must immediately stop. Also, any pressure for her to have diversity training or forced mask-wearing should not take place. Speaking of masks, eliminate the mask mandate in the city of Temecula. There is plenty of evidence showing the harm wearing one can be and little evidence that it actually stops the transmission of COVID nineteen. Wearing a mask is basically just symbolism over substance. Lastly, why are there still restrictions on businesses? It has been over a year now. Every business is essential because it provides the livelihood of our citizens. Open Temecula up now with no capacity or any other restrictions. Let our beautiful city fully thrive once again. The next speaker is Bridget Green. Stop the required training of the Ready Commission. Do away with the expense of the Ready Commission and eliminate it. The citizens of Temecula do not want this and did not vote for the Ready Commission. Immediately eliminate mask-wearing in Temecula. If people want to wear a mask, great. There is no science or evidence that masks stop the transmission of disease. They are harmful. Keep all businesses open with no restricted capacity requirements. Also, stop engaging with Jessica Alexander in regards to her choices and her votes. We and I have elected her as our representative in my district and I'm very disturbed by this. Our council is not representing our community and the spending of the city council has gone far beyond its duties. We are a conservative community and we need to preserve this. The Ready Commission is not the majority. The next speaker is Candace. Hear ye, hear ye, hard-working taxpayers of Temecula. On Tuesday, April twenty seventh, city council will have a closed session for an annual performance evaluation, aka a salary raise for the city manager who already takes in over four hundred and twelve thousand. Do you believe Aaron Adams should get paid more, especially for never giving we, the people, a tax refund after all the park school, city hall were closed all year long? He never missed a paycheck, but the people sure did. See, Saul raises to any staff. If the hard-working citizens were told to lock down and not make a livelihood, why should the servants who work for us get raises? I would also like to thank council member Jessica Alexander for standing up for, standing up for her, those that voted for her. The majority of our city is still conservative, although the local social justice warrior group and some public officials are desperate to change that. The next speaker is Aurelia Brower. I am against Aaron Adams or any other city official receiving any sort of compensation increase. I have spoken to many local business owners and not one has heard from Aaron Adams to see how they are doing. Not one has been asked, has been asked by Aaron Adams how he can be of service to them. But yet Aaron Adams has control of how money is being spent. I will be on the Zoom and looking forward to hearing my comments being read in their entirety. The next speaker is Ryan Bradley. I would like to officially register my deep concerns over Jessica Alexander's conduct, both as a pattern and her more recent egregious comments. As someone who lives in Jessica's district, I attempted to engage her through her public social media to ask her without judgment when she planned to take Temecula's diversity and inclusion training. The comment was not accusatory, nor was it condescending at all. Yet she felt the need to block me from interacting with her without any response. Given this, it seems Jessica is unwilling to fulfill her basic duty to her constituents, or at least those she doesn't deem as aligning with her views, I'd surmise, and as such is unfit for her role. Beyond that individual issue, her comments on Rosa Parks were abhorrent, deeply ignorant, factually wrong and have landed our town on the front page once again for racial insensitivity. We must do better as a town and that needs to start with removing Jessica Alexander from a, from a role she is so clearly unfit for. The next speaker is Dana Connolly. As a resident of Temecula for over thirty-three years and a retired TV USD teacher of twenty-two years, I must express my shock and great disappointment with Councilwoman Jessica Alexander's recent refusal to wear a mask and her comparison of herself to Rosa Parks. Does Councilwoman Alexander understand that her job is to represent everyone in the city, which means setting aside her personal and political leanings and to do what is best for her entire community? Has she not seen the beautiful, touching white flags flown around at the duck pond with the names of those who have passed from COVID? Ask those who submitted their loved ones' names if they wish masks had been worn by their loved ones and/or by those who exposed them to the virus, and I guarantee their answers would be yes. Does she realize that all teachers, students and staff must wear masks in our school district? Just like city council members, teachers and staff are expected to model appropriate behavior. And one of those behaviors is to follow California Department of Public Health mask mandate. Eighth-grade social studies students understand that African-Americans were forced to sit at the back of the bus based on the color of their skin. How could Councilwoman Alexander compare her having to wear a simple mask during her work hours to the plight that Rosa Parks and all African-Americans have had to bear and continue to bear based on their skin color? Finally, regarding Councilwoman Alexander's question, when is enough enough? Enough will be enough when the scientists and experts who study this deadly disease say it is safe and when California lifts the mandate. I think of the Jews who had to hide in attics during World War Two without heat, electricity, water, toilets, et cetera, twenty-four seven, twenty-four seven for months to save their lives and the lives of their families. And Councilwoman complains about wearing a simple cloth mask while working and representing her city. Simply stated, her behavior is selfish and shameful. Councilwoman Alexander does not represent the Temecula I know and love. She represents herself, period. I hope she steps down and realizes that her job is for the people, not for her own wishes. If she does not step down, it is my hope that the council asks for her resignation. The next speaker is but there's actually not a name, just and, and the email isn't decipherable either. No increase for city employees, no real work on, on twenty-twenty lower-city folks tax instead. No increase for city employees, no real work on, on twenty twenty lower city folks tax instead. Next speaker is Jason Winning. There is no way in hell the city manager should receive a raise. The next speaker is Bonnie Clark. My husband and I want to put our input to you about a raise for the city manager, Aaron Adams. One hundred, one thousand percent no. He is already making a very high salary. He never missed a paycheck all year while our community businesses and families suffered. If anything, we vote to refund taxes to Temecula residents. We pay for park schools, city hall, etc., that were all closed. The next speaker is Gary McIntosh. It has come to my attention that you are considering a raise for the Temecula city manager and perhaps other employees. While I'm normally for employee raises, I believe it is inappropriate this year. The fact that so many businesses and individuals lost their livelihoods this past year and in many cases are still out of work or on reduced incomes, giving the Temecula city manager a raise will send the wrong message to residents. As a show of support for those who have been financially hurt this year, no raises should be given at this time. Our city manager already makes enough to carry through another year without a raise. Doing so will send a powerful signal of support for many residents of our fine city. The next speaker is Sonia Perez. You were all elected to serve we the people. Your resolve and resolution number twenty twenty-one, section two A, number one, two, and five are not approved by me. Thus seventy-four million dollar building that you all hide in belongs to the hardworking citizens of Temecula and you have closed it for entry for an entire year. We will be present inside the building for the city council meetings without social distancing, without masks, and no one has my permission to take my temperature. Impending on, impeding on my constitutional rights is a violation of the oath of office. You have all taken and a violation against my rights and any other citizen who will not be allowed entrance inside the city council meeting to address you all. Thank you, and I will be on Zoom to listen to my comments being read aloud. The next speaker is Jeannie Thompson. I am writing to you in regards to salary raises for the city manager, Aaron Adams, and any other city official or worker for that matter. I am opposed to any salary raises to any city employee until all Temecula residents are back at full employment as they were prior to this COVID nineteen pandemic and shutdown. I think it is unreasonable as well as irresponsible to be giving cost of living raises or salary raises when many residents have yet to recoup from their financial hardships of unemployment as a result of the pandemic. As a homeowner and taxpaying resident of Temecula, it is my expectation that all vote no on any form of pay raise at this time. The next speaker is Christine Masa. Maya Angelou said, Maya Angelou said, when you know better, you do better. I would like to thank the council members who have educated themselves about diversity, equity, and inclusion. It seems obvious that the tide in our town is turning and even though Temecula is predominantly white, it is becoming increasingly less white and increasingly filled with residents who care about inclusion and racial equity. On a run through my own harvested neighborhood, there are more and more houses with signs and flags supporting Black Lives, LGBTQ rights, and faith in science. It's encouraging. I also see actions and hear words from most of our council supporting the same for most of our council, but not the whole council. I would like to commend our previous city council for creating the commission for race, equity, diversity, inclusion. I would also like to commend the four members of our council who attended the April sixth diversity workshop. Jessica Alexander was conspicuously absent from that workshop with no explanation. Rather than make assumptions, I have reached out to her in two different forums to find out why she did not attend and how she plans to make up for her absence. But she has yet to respond to me. Based on the council members' campaign, I can only assume that she has no interest in true race relations, though I would welcome the opportunity to have her explain her absence in her own words. And based on the council members' most recent comparison, her discomfort in the name of public safety to the civil rights movement of the fifties and sixties, I can assume she is woefully in need of education on these matters, but she's remained silent and appeared unwilling. The silence has not been my experience with the other members of the city council. What I have experienced with the other members is a willingness to listen, a willingness to engage, and a willingness to put the needs of their constituents over their own personal agendas. I have had several conversations with each of the rest of you, either over email, on Zoom, or in person with masks and social distancing and all without media fanfare. None of the rest of you felt the need to call a rally. You just talk to people. We have seen no such approach from Councilmember Alexander, perhaps on the advice of council. When we know better, we do better. We all remember Councilmember Stewart's poor word choices last year. They were painful and I'm sure regrettable. However, what we have also seen from Councilmember Stewart is an effort to try and do better. He is walking the walk. I know he has met one-on-one with diverse community leaders and asked questions and tried to get himself to a better place. He is willing to talk to his constituents and both answer and ask questions, even after a long day personally serving at his brick and mortar business. What we are seeing from Councilmember Alexander is her making bold statements to rile up an audience much like our former president and only address the community via rallies that advance her personal agenda. As she is a member of a five-person council, this cannot be an effective way to govern. This is not the behavior of a team player. In closing, I would like to thank our four council members who promote public safety, equity, diversity, and inclusion in all matters. And for the council member who has yet to demonstrate this, I would hope that her fellow council members can educate her. And if she is unwilling or unable to receive that education or to use her own words, cannot and will not, then my request would be at a minimum to call for her censure for her insensitive and abhorrent comments at the last council meeting. And at best, I would call for her resignation as she does not appear to represent the whole of Temecula's values.
Randy, I need to get another extension. And can we just go to eleven thirty, just in case? How many, how many letters we have left? A lot.
I
It's a lot.
This is my stack.
Yeah, okay, so let's go to eleven thirty and then we'll work from there. I need a motion. Okay, all right, motion in a second. All in favor, I. I know we're under virtual, but we're gonna go ahead. Thank you, Randy.
The next speaker is Suzanne Lane. And actually, I believe Suzanne Lane has already submitted a comment. And it was read for the entirety. We will take Suzanne Lane's second comment and include it with her first for the record. The next speaker is Anthony Young. Your councilwoman Jessica Alexander is what's wrong with America, a snowflake that thinks she's like no other snowflake and has the audacity to compare herself to a woman who is an icon of the movement to keep black people down for ages. That's ridiculous and selfish and frankly shameful. The fact that she won't wear a mask is why the stupid pandemic endures. If people like her would shut the hell up and wear a mask and get vaccinated, we could have been done with this long ago, but she thinks she's special. She's no more special than the six hundred thousand people who have died because of her actions that many other snowflakes, baby shit conservatives have taken. While we're at it, ask her if she feels persecuted because she's Christian, white, or other, then we will truly know why America is a sad sack of a country. By the way, I'm white, Texan, right-leaning, independent, Christian, and married to an immigrant, so she can go pound sand for a while. Tell her to scratch her little mask boo-boo and it'll feel better when people stop dying. You're welcome, a concerned Texan for Temecula prosperity. The next speaker is Jory Caldwell. As a, as a resident of District Two, it is my opinion that Councilwoman Jessica Alexander is being unfairly targeted. She was airing her frustration and feelings of which she has every right to do with mask wearing at the last council meeting. Her reference to Rosa Parks was in reference to Rosa Parks taking a stand in what she believed to be unjust treatment and our hypersensitive climate people putting meanings and references where there is none. Councilwoman Alexander was taking a stand against mask wearing, nothing more. In my opinion, it would behoove our city council to educate themselves and our city on mask wearing. Jessica is right, there is no science to back up the mask wearing mandate. In fact, many doctors have spoken out against it, especially with people with underlying health conditions. It is my hope that her fellow council members will stand with Jessica and support her against all the hate messages and those asking for her resignation. The next speaker is Anna Neri. I am completely appalled by Jessica Alexander's statement of comparing herself to Rosa Parks. Rosa Parks was discriminated and oppressed for the color of her skin. Does Jessica know she is not being oppressed, that no one is singling her out specifically? That there is a worldwide pandemic happening? How ill-informed, completely ignorant, and out of touch with reality does one have to be to make such abhorrent statements? This is a perfect example of someone throwing a tantrum over a policy made by medical and scientific experts who would know more than someone who has, who is not an expert in viruses, has the potentials, nor is in a position to challenge them. Sit down and show humility to the people you represent. Opinions can run rampant, but not in a public seat where you are representing people. Jessica Alexander is a public servant and making those statements shows how subliminally individualistic those comments are. They were all about her and how she feels about wearing a simple mask and kept repeating herself and not giving a real excuse. That is proof that she is in that seat to be self-serving. That is not the attitude to have when representing citizens of Temecula. Where is servant leadership in any of her statements? There is division and contempt in her words and the way she carries herself. Clearly, she is not fit for the position and should resign immediately. There is also the question of where is her professionalism? Who throws these antics in public? City council is there to represent the people. It is not a self-serving or agenda-driven seat to further one's personal interests or that of the donors who may have put you there. The city is a diverse group of people who have integrity, values, respect, and compassion. Our public leader should embody and exemplify these qualities. If that's not what you are doing, then who are you truly serving? The next speaker is Amanda Perez. I am against Aaron Adams or any other city official receiving any sort of compensation increase. I have spoken to many local business owners and not one has heard from Aaron Adams to see how they are doing. Not one has been asked how Aaron Adams can be of service to them. Yet Aaron Adams has control of how our money is being spent. I will be on the Zoom and looking forward to hearing my comments being read in their entirety. Next speaker is Nancy Young. I find Jessica Alexander's comments comparing herself to Rosa Parks and refusing to wear a mask during a city council meeting indefensible and completely selfish. Once again, embarrassing comments from a Temecula city council member are making not only national news, but now international news. We have all had to adjust to wearing masks during this pandemic. I wear one several hours every day while working. Am I Rosa Parks? No. I am doing my part to end this pandemic. What about surgeons who have to wear both N ninety-five masks and surgical masks for hours on end while doing surgery? Are they Rosa Parks? No, they are doing what is necessary to keep patients safe. She needs to resign now, and if she won't resign, you need to remove her. The next speaker is Judy Apima. I just saw on Facebook that there will be a closed-door meeting to discuss raising Aaron Adams' salary. I had to read it twice. I couldn't believe the audacity of any city official or employee asking for a raise on top of the exorbitant salaries that they are currently receiving, especially Aaron Adams. I think a salary of over four hundred thousand should suffice. Plus, please understand that the people in our community are hurting as a result of the COVID pandemic. There are many who are food and shelter insecure because of lost wages. I vote no raises. The next speaker is Julie Candace. My name is Julie Candace and I have been a Temecula resident since nineteen eighty, ninety-eight. Equity for individuals in our community as well as education and training for those in office in regards to inclusivity and diversity is of the utmost importance. As a teacher, practicing and teaching equity is at the forefront of my life in classroom. I would hope that practices of equity and inclusivity are intertwined in the decisions and actions of elected officials as well. Jessica Alexander has not been reflecting these values which are held by not only myself, but also by many individuals in this community. This has been shown in her unwillingness to participate in the diversity training city council meeting on April sixth, the workshop regarding race, equity, diversity, and inclusion initiative, which she framed as punishment rather than an opportunity to grow as a human being. Her ignorance has been clearly highlighted by her recent comparison of her refusal to wear masks to the civil rights demonstrations by the iconic Rosa Parks. This is racially, racially insensitive to the struggle of Rosa Parks and people in the BIPOC community who are still experiencing major racism and discrimination in our society today. Refusing to wear a mask puts others in danger who may be older, immune compromised. Wearing a mask shows empathy to others in our community and the refusal to do, to do so should not be the actions demonstrated by elected officials. Jessica Alexander has clearly shown ignorance, racial insensitivity, and a lack of empathy in her actions and statements. Alexander's Facebook tagline includes the words unify, educate, serve. Some, some of my BIPOC friends have told me that she not only does not unify this community, but her actions actually makes the city feel unsafe for them, their families, and their friends. Elected officials should make the people in their city feel safe, not the opposite. She has also clearly shown that she is not willing to educate herself with her refusal to attend the ready trainings. She does not set the example or reflect the values that many of us want to see in Temecula leadership. Her actions leave me wondering who is she truly trying to serve? We cannot allow elected officials to behave this way and ignore the struggles, trials, and tribulations of diverse voices in the community. I would like to see the city council address this abhorrent behavior from Jessica Alexander. I also greatly push for Jessica Alexander to sit down with members of the BIPOC community, receive the diversity and equity training she missed, and or resign from office. Hate has no place in Temecula. The next speaker is Jessica, Jessica Christopher. I am writing to express my concerns that my values and the community's values are not being represented. I recently watched the new commission on diversity on the web, their first meeting. I found it more disheartening. Those people are hell-bent on causing more harm than good. Only the chair seemed concerned about the people of this city. It was disgusting to see that she was the only one who thought a prayer to open the meeting would be good. What the heck? This is what Temecula has become. These people want to use the positions you created to harm the people of the city. That was clear by what I saw. Now I understand they are now attacking our newest city council person. When will this stop? I know one of them and she has a chip on her shoulder the size of Hafdo. Why on earth would you put someone like that on the commission? One that, one that the people of this city did not vote for or want. Then you put a person on the commission who was a major campaign supporter of campaign supporter of Jessica Alexander's competitor. This is shameful and I am so disappointed in this city. We have lived here for over twenty years and it is fast becoming a place I do not recognize. What this kind of, with this kind of city management, it is clear why California is losing so many people and why Texas, Montana, Florida, and Oregon are gaining people. I have lived in the South as my husband was military and I know what true redlining is. I know what actual racism looks like. I have seen and experienced it. I've seen people living in dirt floor hovels. And let me tell you, that is not here. We move back to Temecula so we would not be near races of any kind. This horrible commission you created is encouraging attacks and force race training. This has got to stop. The commission needs to be disbanded. The hate speech against Jessica Alexander must, must stop. I respectfully ask and respectfully demand an action supported by the majority of like-minded Temecula citizens, the Temecula City Council, to immediately stop the required training of the Ready Commission. Do away with the expense of the Ready Commission and eliminate it. The citizens of Temecula do not want this and did not vote for the Ready Commission. Respect Jessica Alexander as our elected official and discourage the rhetoric that she is culturally insensitive. She has Judeo-Christian values we voted for. We love our community and all people. The influence and outright statements that we are not inclusive and that our community is racist are hurtful and not true. Stop this behavior and messaging and discourage it. No more mask wearing in Temecula. If people want to wear a mask, fine. If people do not want to wear a mask, that is fine too. Keep all businesses open with no restricted capacity requirements. The governor of South Dakota served her people well. Melissa Melendez posts regularly the hospital capacity and we were never at capacity with our hospitals. Be a city council, we can be proud of. Stand up for the rights of the people and do not bow to encouraging hate. Be a South Dakota governor. On a different note, if you are going to put flags up at the duck pond, can we get some flags for all the young people who committed suicide and overdose during this lockdown and mask frenzy? We know of eight young people who paid a high price for the lockdown. One was a young engineer who had gotten his first job. He grew up in Temecula and I know his mom and dad would love to see a flag for him. Red would be the color I would suggest for the flags. I am one hundred percent sure when the count is done, there will be more red flags than white. The next speaker is Richard Candace. I generally have a lot of respect for the members of Temecula City Council. You are performing an essential and at time difficult job balancing various decisions regarding Temecula and the people who live here. However, I feel compelled to write and just express my disappointment and discontent with one counselor, Jessica Alexander. I am appalled by Jessica Alexander's recent behavior and comments. Black Lives Matter, the murder of George Floyd, and other members of the community have clearly indicated that we as a society need to take significant steps towards equity and fairness. Jessica's refusal to educate herself with equity trainings is a strong indication of her need to attend such trainings. Further, her recent comments comparing her refusal to wear a face mask during a global pandemic to Rosa Parks is beyond insensitive. It is a sign of ignorance and lack of understanding of racial equality and the struggles towards that equality. Has she and other people who refuse to protect all of us through a face mask suffered hundreds of years of mistreatment, hate, prejudice, discrimination, and struggle to correct these societal injustices? Clearly, this is a rhetorical question, but one that she needs to understand before she makes another ugly or erroneous comment. Jessica Alexander's comments and behavior have clearly indicated that she is a part of the problem we face today. I encourage her to be involved in extensive diversity and equity education with members of our diverse community. The Temecula City Council does not have room for anyone unwilling to work toward increased equity in our community. The next comment is Tammy Sins. I am calling for the resignation of Jessica Alexander. I have been a resident of Temecula for thirty-three years. I am also a former Navy ICU nurse. I am, and I hope you are as well, completely shocked and offended that Jessica that Jessica Alexander, one of our city council members, is comparing wearing a mask to protect the health of our community to that of Rosa Parks' action after being forced to submit to institutional racism. It has not even been a year since another one of our city council members, James Stewart, had to resign for making the comment. He did not believe that there has ever been a good person of color killed by a police officer in Temecula. How is it possible that we have not yet learned from that mistake? Yet here we are on April 13th during a general meeting of the Temecula City Council. Jessica made the following statement. Look at Rosa Parks. She was accommodated in the back of the bus, and she finally took a stand and moved to the front because she knew that wasn't lawful, so she took a stand. At what point in time do we... I'm getting pushed to the back of the bus. This is what I feel like. This is wrong on so many levels, but the two most obvious are, as an ICU nurse, shame on any civic leader who refuses to follow CDC guidelines of mask-wearing in which to protect the public. We have now had 572,000 people die from this disease, and she is unwilling to wear a mask that might save someone's lives. She is unfit to serve our community. She also needs to apologize for comparing herself to Rosa Parks, who was a civil rights icon and fought against institutional racism. I understand Ms. Alexander failed to attend the equity and diversity training that all other council members attended. It is very obvious that she needs this type of training much more than anyone else. If she is unwilling to join her fellow council members, she needs to resign, as she has shown. She is not a team player. I would also like to point out that Jessica Alexander advertised and promoted the January 6th insurrection 92 times on her Facebook page. Anyone who was a part of or promoted the insurrection does not deserve a seat on our city council. I know we are better than this. I urge you to consider and encourage Mrs. Alexander to step down for the greater good of our community. Ms. Alexander does not have what it takes to be a representative of our community. And as a fellow veteran, I am embarrassed by her words, her actions, and encourage her to do the right thing and resign. The next speaker is Ira Robinson. This message is submitted in connection with the council's April 13th agenda item concerning council member Jessica Alexander's request that they consider whether and when the council should return to in-person public meetings. First, I would like to thank Mayor Edwards, Mayor Portemron, and council members Schuing and Stewart for their thoughtful consideration of the request. In connection with council member Alexander's approach, which struck me as being highly politically motivated, I believe it must be said that her statement comparing late Mrs. Rosa Parks' situation with hers was insensitive, inappropriate, and on almost every respect historically inaccurate. Only Mrs. Parks' names and the word "bus" were accurate. I also found it remarkable that Mrs. Alexander has already, quote, "had enough of working in a virtual environment after only a few days on the very job she campaigned through months of pandemic to win." And when it comes to having had enough, Ms. Alexander obviously needs to be informed and helped to understand that it took Mrs. Parks almost a lifetime of exposure to tyrannical treatment and unjust laws before she finally reached the point where she had had enough. One has to wonder how Mrs. Alexander reached having had enough after less than 100 days on the council, an agenda perhaps. Hopefully, Ms. Alexander's future public utterances on this or any subject will be more responsibly researched and more tastefully and respectfully conceived and delivered. Finally, I would like to share a comment I hope heard about Ms. Alexander's unfortunate Rosa Parks comparison. The speaker said, "Talk about false equivalency." One would think the councilwoman would be content to simply give voice to her extraordinary selfishness, but no, she has to flaunt her ignorance too. So that's it. Thank you for the opportunity you expressed in views. The next speaker is Daniel Warner. Are you kidding me? Erin Adams needs a pay increase? No, no, no. The next speaker is Jennifer Sharp. I am writing because I am outraged and sickened by council member Alexander's unmitigated audacity. The temerity of someone of her privilege, a middle-class white woman who holds a position of power in one of the safest cities around, to compare themselves to someone who was set to jail fighting against Jim Crow segregation and systemic racism because she, like the rest of us, has been asked to care about our fellow citizens and wear a mask is so gross, so disgusting, and frankly, so disconcerting that she needs to resign and spend her time learning about history, which she is twisting to serve her own agenda. Her histrionics regarding a simple, albeit effective notice, the lack of a significant flu season this past year, preventative measures such as wearing a mask shows that council member Alexander lacks a basic understanding of science and the fortitude to do what is right for her community. It is abundantly clear that the only reason she is on the Temecula City Council is to forward her QOP beliefs and not to serve her constituents. The silence of the rest of the council when council member Alexander uttered her ridiculous comparison was deafening and disappointing. Your silence is complicity. It is time for the rest of the council to stop coddling her and stand up for the people they swore to serve. I urge you to condemn her remarks. The next speaker is Donna Mallett. $412,000 yearly proposed salary for Erin Adams. Can this be true? Disgusting. It's more than a US president earns. This is not acceptable. The next speaker is Judy Smith. My name is Judy Smith, and I've been a resident of this wonderful valley for 33-plus years, and I'm beyond concerned for my beautiful city of Temecula. I will get right to the point. I am strongly against any ready training whatsoever and did not vote for such commission because I do not agree with what it represents. I believe it to be divisive because it infers that some sort of racial problem exists, which it does not. We are a community of supportive neighbors who get along and help one another. We always have. We are a people of all colors and nationalities who have been coexisting for decades quite successfully, and we do not need a ready commission, not now, not ever. Quit stirring the pot of hatred with such a waste of our tax dollars. Stop this nonsense and get to work on what the citizens of Temecula really want and need. We want Jessica Alexander to be allowed to do her job and to be honored and respected for the immensely talented and cherished city council member that we voted her to be. Her Christian values, her outstanding character, her upright lifestyle, and hard-working ethics are why we love her and why we voted for her. The hateful lies against her are disgrace. Reject such hatred. Stop at once this despicable false chatter and stop at once any further spread of it by standing up for truth instead. Additionally, I want the city of Temecula to cease the mask mandate and allow all businesses to fully open and run at full-capacity mask-free. We, as citizens, are intelligent enough to decide for ourselves whether we want to wear a mask or not. We abhor and reject being forced to wear one because each of us who are healthy do not need to wear a mask in the first place. We know the science and recognize they are not safe, nor do they prevent disease. Stop this nonsense, please. Thank you for taking the time to read my sincere concerns. So this comment is from Brian Smith, and the comments are identical to the comments by Judy Smith. The next speaker is Mary Rosa Pierce. Just heard through the community grapevine that there is a closed-session meeting scheduled to give the city manager Erin Adams a salary increase from his already ridiculous salary package of over $412,000. This is outrageous. Not only for the fact that this is a closed-session meeting where the taxpayers of the city are not allowed to attend to voice our opinion, more like frustration, but the fact that a salary increase would even be on an agenda item to increase the already outrageous compensation package Mr. Adams is making in these difficult times is beyond unacceptable. Let me remind you that the citizens of this city have been out of work, losing our businesses. Our schools have been closed, and children were forced to do Zoom schooling, where they sat at home depressed and learned absolutely nothing. We couldn't use the city's recreational facilities we pay for and never got a tax credit for not being able to use them. Taxes in this city in all categories are unbearably high, and this individual deserves a salary increase for what? How shameful. As a tax-paying citizen of this city, I am not happy about this, and I guarantee you that I am not the only one. The next speaker is... It just says George. My name is George Sovereign, and I am a people of California. I have a few issues to address. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing consistent with state of the California executive order and 29/20 dated March 17. According to California Government Code 8627.5B, the order shall remain, in fact, until the order or regulation is rescinded by the governor. The governor proclaims the termination of the state of emergency or for a period of 60 days, whichever occurs first. It is my wish and I require the next public meeting to be in person. Follow the law. We move on to California Civil Code 51, which reads, "All persons in California are free and equal and are entitled to the full and equal accommodations, advantages, facilities, privileges, or services in all business establishments of every kind whatsoever being served outside is against the law." Just yesterday, I came to Temecula City Hall to conduct business. I calmly and respectfully spoke with three employees outside. This led me, being denied access to City Hall to conduct business. I was then intimidated when City Hall and management contacted the Riverside Sheriff Department. Two officers arrived and surrounded me. You're probably wondering, what did I do to require law enforcement intervention? The answer is, I refused to consent to an illegal search and seizure. I did not allow my temperature to be taken. I'm guilty of defending the Fourth Amendment. Policy does not supersede the law. City Hall policies violate California laws. In closing, government code 11120, it is the public policy of the state that public agencies exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. You serve us. The next speaker is Eva Smith. This is lengthy, so I'm gonna start the three minutes. My name is Eva Smith. I am a registered voter, retired wireless communications engineer, community volunteer, faithful voter, and a proud resident of Temecula for over 23 years. Serving the city of Temecula is a great honor and should be revered as such. During the past two months, I have seen a lot of growth in our city's leadership through the formation of the Ready Commission, a diversity and equity workshop, and the Temecula City Council's open discussions on face mask mandates and best practices to keep our community safe. I commend you for having several transparent public discussions. However, during the last Temecula City Council meeting, city council member Jessica Alexander compared her disapproval for Riverside County Public Health Orders to civil rights icon Rosa Parks, and her remarks are problematic. As a concerned citizen, I demand action against council member Jessica Alexander for her culturally insensitive and tone-deaf remarks comparing her unwillingness to protect her colleagues from the spread of coronavirus by wearing a face mask to civil rights icon Rosa Parks' segregation protests. I would also like to request a public statement on whether or not the city of Temecula has a social media policy for city council members. How does the city of Temecula protect itself from liability when events, messages, and content posted on social media platforms, blogs, newsletter by public officials is perceived as being made on behalf of the city of Temecula or organized by the city? What is the liability the city of Temecula has when city officials post, promote, and spread disinformation and misinformation? Where does the city of Temecula draw the line? As the wife, daughter, sister, and sister-in-law of military veterans who have proudly served our country in all branches of the armed forces, I also find it concerning that council member Jessica Alexander fails to follow county, state, and federal guidelines to protect our citizens, teachers, students, and first responders, especially since she is also a veteran. There is no comparison between Rosa Parks' refusal to give up her seat on a bus to fight racial segregation on public transportation and council member Jessica Alexander's tone-deaf statements. Rosa Parks' refusal to give up her seat was just the beginning of a 12-month boycott. After the segregation laws were made unlawful, black teens were beaten, shot, and churches were bombed. It also resulted in years of hardship for Rosa Parks as she received death threats, lost her job, her marriage, her home, and financial stability in the wake of the Montgomery boycotts. History teaches us that on that fateful day, it wasn't a planned protest. It was a day when she was burdened, pained, and angered by the details of Emmett Till's death and systemic racism, which failed to hold his murderers accountable. It's shameful and disheartening that council member Jessica Alexander would compare her refusal to follow social distancing and face mask health orders to the pain, brutality, and injustice suffered by segregated black Americans during the Jim Crow era. There is no comparison. Jessica Alexander's statements show a disregard for black Americans' pain, suffering, and systemic racism then and today. That's three minutes. The next speaker is Dawn. So it is being said that on Tuesday, April 27, city council closed session for annual performance evaluation, aka a salary raise for city manager Erin Adams, who already takes in over $412,000. He makes more than the president. How can that be justified for a servant of such a small city without their own police department to protect the residents, people who pay the salaries? This is ridiculous, outrageous, greedy, and poor management of our hard-earned money. Temecula has suffered greatly over the last year and a half. Crime is way out of control. Half of the mailboxes or more have been and continue to be broken into. Theft is up, home break-ins, cars stolen from people's driveways, et cetera. The homeless situation is disgusting, and the fact the city is allowing homeless to be bussed in from San Diego to dirty the city, causing even more crime, is totally frustrating. We need our own police department. That is where any extra money should be going to. We will all be demanding this soon. There are not nearly enough CHP or rented sheriffs to handle the crime and the abundance of rude and careless drivers, traffic violators, and the city keeps building more low-income housing. What are you servants who are working for we, the people, doing to keep the city of ours peaceful and to grow and be a point in the map where people are drawn to come for vacation? A city where we can feel safe and proud to live? Temecula is losing out to criminals who run freely by committing crimes and either not going to jail or back on the street to commit crimes the next day. There are too many people renting out their homes and to criminals who commit crimes and disturb residents and even cause shootings on more than a few occasions. And now we are seeing greedy public servants. I only lived here for four and a half years, and I've watched Temecula go downhill. We moved from Los Angeles to get away from all that. Now it's all even closer to home. The community is going to voice their opinions. We are getting fed up. Oh, and the speed limits are way too high. They need to be lowered. Butterfield, Rancho Calum, Temecula Parkway are not freeways. People are driving 70 miles an hour on these streets. Too many reckless and careless drivers causing accidents. The next speaker is Anne Fetterchuk. Good morning. I want to express my concern for the remarks made by Jessica Alexander comparing Rosa Parks to wearing masks. Will anyone be beaten, killed, arrested, or denied access to community facilities because they do not wear a mask? No, businesses have a right, according to current Supreme Court rulings, to access to services and property they own. Thankfully, they are following CDC guidelines in most cases. Ms. Alexander is hyperbole and negatively impacting the health and is negatively impacting the health and welfare of our community by promoting such ludicrous comparisons. Wear a mask? Don't wear a mask. Nothing happens except you are showing consideration for your fellow citizens, family member, and self. Perhaps Ms. Alexander needs to take a stroll by the pond. Thank you for the time. The next speaker is Jody Christopher. I'm writing to express my concern that my values and the values of much of the community are being represented. I'd appreciate your actions on the following. Last year, the Ready Commission was formed, even though a large majority of the citizens in Temecula were not in support of this commission. The council's actions did not reflect the position of its citizens. I watched the last Ready Commission meeting online and was very confused at their purpose. I thought this commission was created to further the equality and inclusion of all to our community. Having lived in Temecula and invested in the community with two businesses, and this commission did not make me or my wife feel included. I respectfully ask and respectfully demand an action supported by the majority of like-minded Temecula citizens, the Temecula City Council, to immediately stop the required training of the Ready Commission. Do away with the expense of the Ready Commission and eliminate it. The citizens of Temecula do not want this and did not vote for the Ready Commission. In November, we elected Jessica Alexander and re-elected Stu Stewart to office of Temecula City Council to represent our values and city government. The hate speech and untruth leveled against Jessica Alexander must stop. This is our city collectively. I support Jessica Alexander. This smear campaign being leveled against her must be renounced, and she must be defended as a valued member of our community. And respect for Jessica Alexander as our elected official must be defended. We, as a community, must discourage the rhetoric that she is culturally insensitive. She has the Judeo-Christian values we voted for. We love our community and all people. The inference and outright statements that we are not inclusive and that our community is racist is hurtful and not true. Stop this behavior and messaging. Discourage it. The next speaker is Kelly. There is no way that any city employee should be getting any pay raise at this time. Do not think for a moment that this is okay with the people of Temecula. We have all lost so much last year and are still struggling to make ends meet. Once again, no, nobody gets any pay raises. Such an insult to us all that this should even be a consideration at this time. The next speaker is Tammy Acme. I cannot believe we have such an ignorant person representing the Temecula City Council. Jessica Alexander is an embarrassment to the city of Temecula if she doesn't understand the history of the civil rights movement. Words matter. This pandemic is going to keep everyone from going back to business as usual. The selfish people like Ms. Alexander keep denying science. She's basically thumbing her nose at every white flag around that duck pond. She clearly does not care about the families in Temecula that have lost loved ones to COVID-19. She doesn't care about our healthcare professionals taking care of those fighting COVID in our hospitals and long-term care facilities. Shame on you, Jessica Alexander, resign. Shame on your Jessica, shame on you, Jessica Alexander resign. The next speaker is PJ. PJ in Temecula. I won't belabor the point that Jessica Alexander is unfit for Temecula City Council. She seems to be doing a fine job of hammering home that truth as it is. I've no doubt she will continue to double down on her behavior tonight, revealing herself to be the the psychopathic zealot that she is, not working for the city's residents but for herself and her tight circle of insurrectionist pretenders. This council is all about you, Jessica, right? Keep dragging the city and this council through the mud with your Q conspiracy rantings and false and racist equations. Congrats on making Temecula a laughingstock for another fifteen minutes. A must do, a mistoo. Here's to hoping Captain Zack descends upon Alexander's next planned misinformation fest with the same fury that he had when attacking and threatening the gathering of BLM protesters at the Duck Pond back when they were demanding and since validated conviction of the murderer inmate Derek Chauvin. Wait, if Americans don't have freedoms, how on earth would it be possible for them to gather on public property in a planned event so freely disseminated? Looking forward to the rubber bullets and the tear gas captain. For those planning to attend the event, pairing your jean shorts and white New Balances with an American flag as a T-shirt is a clear violation of the flag code. I'm talking to you, Reese and Cal. The fact that neither of you quote-unquote patriots have the sense to respect the flag of this country as you adorn it with images of Adderall addicted reality TV star and allow it to be defaced with discolorations of the stripes while hanging it from the back of your filthy lifted F-150 speak volumes. Enough, respect the flag. Don't use it as a cover for your thinly veiled racism and ignorance. It insults me. It insults each and every one of us. Listen, it's time for the city council to get back to the business of creating a treasure map for driving lanes around the Vale Ranch Loop, determining whether speed bumps in Meadowview will cause an increase in minivan wheelies, and all caps figuring out how to make it so it doesn't take me forty-five minutes to drive to Marietta. Last thought, make Temecula City Council boring again. The next speaker is Jennifer Reeves. When I saw the city council meeting with the comments from Jessica Alexander, I was honestly taken back to hear her try to compare the serious oppression of which Rosa Parks faced with her being asked to wear a mask and or stay home and attend meetings via an online video platform. Her comments were tone deaf and show her lack of true understanding of what so many people of color have had to live through even today, right here in Temecula Valley. This is sadly not the first time the city council has had this, has had this occur, but there has been progress made by both the city and other city council member to learn and take in a different perspective. This does not seem to be something Jessica Alexander is willing to do. I respectfully ask that she be required to take the race, equality, and leadership training that every other member of the city council, as well as other people from the city, have taken, or that she step down as a member of the city council. Her comments cannot serve as a reflection of what this Temecula Valley stands for. The next speaker is Troy Chavez. I want to say first, this is not a call for Jessica Alexander to resign. Instead, this is a call for a public official representing more than one demographic to educate herself wholeheartedly on a topic she obviously does not understand. I won't even call it a mistake. We can call it a misunderstanding of American history. Russell Parks represented a minority, yes, but that minority of people had much more severe problems to face than whether to wear a mask that everyone is told to wear. I don't see hoses being sprayed on no mask supporters either. The separation between the Honorable Councilwoman Jessica Alexander and Rosa Parks could not be starker. I understand she has supporters who believe her words carry zero weight, but that is just representative of the deep divisions living and thriving in our country and town. I ask both parties to not find fervor, anger, or to chastise, but rather to, as a community, come together and have the important conversations we preach about so we can build bridges of understanding, not bombastic language furthering us apart. I will say this, however. If Councilwoman Alexander doubles down on her remarks, then the belly of the beast will have presented itself or herself for the whole community to see. We must use this situation as an opportunity to learn. There are plenty of other issues to grandstand about. Let me know if there are any further steps or questions. The next speaker is Ed Dual. As a longtime resident of District Two and a supporter of Councilwoman Jessica Alexander, I and the others in District are appalled that out-of-town residents are trying to use hateful and hurtful words and twist them into hate speech against her. We would like the city clerk to make sure, as in regular city council meetings, that when she reads public comments, that she gives names and cities where they're coming from, and if it's not on the emails, it should not be entered into the record. The next speaker is Katie Elliott. I love Temecula. I am excited to see that Temecula recognizes the importance of DEI and celebrates Temecula's multicultural history. Jessica Alexander refusing to show up to the DEI training is an insult to the people you represent. Jessica, your statements about wearing a mask and being sent to the back of the bus are hurtful, insensitive, and disrespectful. To refuse to attend the EI training and then to make a comment comparing being asked to wear a mask to the experience of Rosa Parks shows you have zero understanding of what it means to be discriminated against based on your race. You can take a mask off or put one on. Black and brown men and women cannot change the color of their skin to escape racism that happens here in Temecula. Temecula is full of diversity. Dozens of studies show the success organizations have when they choose to embrace DEI. The council is no different. Temecula City Council, we need you to step up. We need people who can celebrate Temecula's differences, not make them insignificant. We need a team who can recognize that DEI is not a partisan issue. DEI and cultural intelligence is a way of better loving our neighbors and the people we do life with. The next speaker is Renee Lazar. I'll start the three minutes, just in case. My name is Renee Lazar, and I have lived in Temecula for over five years, including beautiful Wolf Creek, Red Hawk, and now Harveston Lake. I love everything our city has to offer, including wineries, old town history, and restaurants, beautiful libraries, city pools, city parks, and these all include a wonderful array of people that I call community and neighbors. It's obvious to me our city council has always taken heart, the future of its community, and beauty and design. It's obvious to me they have always been thinking family first. It's obvious to me we have a diverse community that encourages forward thinking, or do we? I write to you this evening because I am alarmed and worried about my dear city. I am alarmed we have a city council member who thinks me first by her actions and statements regarding wearing a mask makes me Rosa Parks, as stated by Jessica Alexander on April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one City Council Zoom meeting. I know nineteen fifty-five was a long time ago, before I was even born, but American history and our civil rights leaders, we all should know and understand what, who, and why their actions are so important. Rosa Parks lived in a time where laws weren't fair to black lives. If you were a person of color, you weren't allowed to use the same school, restaurants, water fountains, or even bathrooms. Black athletes have their own sports teams. That's hard for my grandkids to ever even understand. Even Rosa Parks knew that everyone deserved the same respect and rights. Apparently, Council Leader Alexander thinks her rights are above others. Apparently, she feels her participation in mask mandates is equal to civil rights movement of Rosa Parks. We all should be outraged at such an ignorant comment, such a selfish gesture as to declare, I've had enough. I will not wear my mask again. Please be outraged with me. Please show the city you have some deep regard for our future, and this kind of thinking is alarming to you as well. Please show the community that thoughts and ignorant actions such as Mrs. Alexander's are not the new norm. She is not a victim. Wearing a mask is a community effort we all must endure. Wearing a mask is not a social injustice brought about by years of oppression and slavery. Comparing herself to a civil rights hero may get us the attention of national press that I know we really don't want. I request you to speak up and no longer stay silent on this issue. Please have her step down and apologize. Please have Jessica resign immediately before our city has labeled that community instead of the one we moved here to enjoy. One bad apple can ruin the whole pie. One mat, once the mask mandate is lifted, I think we all can again enjoy a piece of that pie and unite our community instead of further divide with such privileged comments. I voted for my district council member because I had faith in his leadership ability to influence and put my city first. Please do the right thing and have her step down before any more damage is done to our community's reputation. Please, our community is watching and waiting for you to do the right thing. The next speaker. The next speaker is James King. My name is Jim King. And I bought a home in beautiful Temecula three years ago. I have ten grandkids that come and visit often. I want them to visit a city that is welcoming, family-oriented, and not culturally nor socially stunned, stunted. The remarks by councilmember Jessica Alexander on the Zoom video city council meeting held on April thirteenth make me think we have an issue with American history, civil liberties, and modern medical science. I also don't want to leave out the word kindness when referring to the community I moved from San Diego to call home. Leaving the hustle and bustle for the calm, quiet, and family community was our goal. To compare mask-wearing with Rosa Parks, to be a city leader and flat-out refuse to wear a mask because you've had enough, what kind of example are we leading as a city? What kind of future will Temecula have if our grandkids look to us with embarrassment or ignorance? Jessica obviously doesn't understand the concept of lead by example, something we all should want to instill in Temecula's future. I appreciate leadership who cares and not reckless statements that further divider our city. I am concerned. Please, if you think this is proper behavior, then continue to be silent, and we will know and understand where our city government stands. But if you agree with me, then I request you ask Jessica to attend a mandated race, equity, and diversity training, and then have her apologize to our community. Her remarks are insensitive and unkind. Her remarks hurt us all. Her remarks may go as far as being seen on national media, giving bad light to our city, asking of us why I possibly would have moved here of all places. I know we all want to be a shining city, not one that is lost in misquoted nineteen fifty-five history. We should all be constantly learning as neighbors together among a community that is willing to engage in today's hot topics instead of personal agendas. The only agenda should be to make our city better. That includes following CDC mask mandate guidelines. No one enjoys wearing a mask, but we do it because we care and want to stay safe in our home and city. Hopefully, she won't use any more historical heroes in her victim persona. But if Jessica is not shown or directed to that community-first agenda, then I request you ask her to resign because she has told us, quote, she has had enough. It is time to show her, as a city, that kind of thinking is not our future. If you agree with me and Jessica refuses to humble, continues to show poor judgment in statements and action, I request you ask her to step down from her position. Our city, our future deserves better. The next speaker is Janine Robinson. I am Janine Robinson, Temecula resident since two thousand sixteen and mother to two young children. First, I would like to thank the city council members who have continuously put the safety and health of our community first ahead of their own opinions and agendas. Jessica Alexander's comments at the last meeting that she cannot and will not wear a mask horrified me for multiple reasons. Wearing a mask during a pandemic is the bare minimum to protect ourselves and one another from a potentially deadly respiratory virus. The ophthalmology office where I worked for five years required patients who came in sick to wear disposable masks to protect staff and other patients. My, my physician required me to wear a mask when I needed to see her for any contagious illness. It is actually covered by OSHA. So what I hear Jessica saying is that she cannot and will not do the bare minimum to protect the community that she supposedly represents. I found it absolutely abhorrent that the inconvenience and discomfort of something so small and simple is not worth my life. Now, that may sound dramatic, but this is the reality for both me and my three-year-old daughter. I am severely asthmatic. My lungs are weak, and I take multiple medications every day to be able to breathe like your average person. COVID being a pulmonary virus could very realistically end my life and leave my children motherless. What's even more, what's more even with my breathing limitations, I am an athlete. I snowboard and compete in obstacle courses, races, and five K runs. Many times I do so while wearing a face covering for protection against wind and cold and dust. I carry a travel breathing requirement, breathing treatment to do so, and often have to stop my activity to use it. But I am able to do these things with my face covered. I can assure you, these activities take a lot more energy, especially with a cloth face covering than going shopping or stopping for a coffee. I have a difficult time understanding how someone with both military and police force training cannot find the discipline or wherewithal to do so for the amount of time it takes to go grocery shopping. My three-year-old is not asthmatic, but she is type one diabetic. For those unfamiliar with type one diabetic, any illness as small as the common cold puts diabetics at risk of going into diabetic chitiasis, which can cause cerebral and pulmonary edema and organ damage. Combine the risk of DKA with the potential long-term organ effects of COVID, and I am looking at multiple levels of danger for my toddler because a mask is too much to ask, or my children and I ought to be confined to our home because somehow that is more reasonable than adults wearing a mask during a pandemic. This has been our life for the last year due to the polit- politicalization of masks and stances like Jessica Alexander's. Knowing that not only community members, but now definitely someone who sits on our city council cannot take families like mine into consideration before making such harmful and insensitive comments, reveal that Temecula may not be the place that I had hoped it was going to be. The next speaker is John Andrews. The recent political attacks against a member of the city council for finding inspiration by a civil rights icon is much ado about nothing. This is all being orchestrated by self-appointed, so-called, social justice activists like local Julie Gary in order to sow even more political division and angst within our community and throughout our country. That an elected member to the city council finds inspiration by the actions of Rosa Parks is laudable. Why is it now all of a sudden elected city leader cannot cite the worthy actions of somebody like Rosa Parks? Is it because the council member is religious or patriotic or white or female? We are all Americans. We should all especially look to those noteworthy Americans for inspiration who have sacrificed and made great contributions to our country, particularly when a thought or idea in such political climates may go against the current conventional wisdom. Julie Gary and her ilk demonstrate their ignorance by suggesting that there is no connection whatsoever between Rosa Parks' stand for civil rights and the desire of millions and millions of fellow citizens to do away with restrictive mask edicts and social gathering bans as dictated by our California governor. The simple truth is that the U.S. Supreme Court had ruled five times against our California governor because his dictates were indeed violating the civil rights of those Californians seeking to exercise their naturally ordained First Amendment freedoms. The court has ruled time and time again that the governor cannot shut down churches and other social and political gatherings because he has no authority to do so. Similarly, Rosa Parks sought justice when she was denied her seat on a bus in the democratically-controlled Jim Crow South of last century. Jim Crow policies that existed when there were more, more than, when there were little more than government-imposed dictates that were ruled as unconstitutional. If anything, government, Gavin Newsom's anti-civil rights actions this past year should entitle him to join the ranks of fellow unconstitutional political demagogues like Woodrow Wilson, Orville Faubus, and Bull Conner, all Democrats. So instead of letting these race baiters, race baiters and political grievance hustlers continue to try to spread dissension, angst, recriminations throughout Temecula, let's remember that we should honor, celebrate, invoke, and seek inspiration from all American leaders and heroes of virtue, of conscience, and of bravery. These fellow Americans come from all walks of life and from all natural origins of class, race, and creed, much like the banners honoring veterans that are periodically displayed throughout Temecula. These honorees transcend race, class, gender, and creed. I would highly recommend that local agitator and grievance monger Julie Gary make an appointment with the Ready Commission so that she can learn some tolerance herself, as well as understanding that race baiting is just as bad as racism. Note, I have BCC, the email contact of the Ready Commission, so that they can perhaps expect a call from Ms. Gary in the near future for her remedial counseling. Lastly, I once again strongly encourage this esteemed city council to fully reopen City Hall and City Council meetings to the public as quickly as possible. That's three minutes.
Randy, do you want to take a break? Um, because we're gonna have to extend anyway.
No, I'm, I'm okay. I probably have another like ten or so, and I just want to crank this out.
Okey-doke. So I need a motion to extend. Let's go to, what time is it? Midnight at least.
Move to midnight.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. And let's go. You sure you don't need a break, Randy?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate your concern, however. The next speaker is Melissa Bahu. I am not very excited to be writing to you yet again, but after seeing our town make news headlines, I can't remain silent. I am so tired of Temecula only making the news when one of our representatives representatives finally acts with ignorance. Seriously, it's exhausting and pathetic. I'm sure you will get plenty of eloquently written letters. Mine, I'll keep it short because, well, honestly, I'm tired of this mess. It seems as though Jessica Alexander needs both a reality check and a history lesson after seeing her be wrong about both public health and Rosa Parks. She was right about one thing. We are a year into a pandemic, a year, and yet people still want to deny the validity of masks and distancing to protect our community. At this point, there's no reason to respect that opinion nor take anything else those holding that thought seriously. Frankly, it's a joke and one that's not very funny, and I'm over it. Jessica is not a martyr, and using her status as a council member to try and compare herself to Rosa Parks while completely getting the story wrong is such an embarrassment. It shows how badly Ms. Alexander needs to agree to diversity training and maybe a GED American history course. We are better than this, at least- We are better than this. At least I want to believe so. Temecula is better than this. Encourage your fellow council members to be better than this, please. The next speaker is is Paul Bahu. Jessica Alexander is being unfairly maligned. She understands that true freedom cannot exist when public safety is a concern. Though I'm curious why she is only advocating against masks, why stop there in the spirit of council member Alexander standing in brave stance on masks? I propose we also do away with stop signs and stoplights. Why should my freedom drive? Why should my freedom to drive when it pleases me be infringed? Saying I need to wait my turn is clearly liberal state overreach. Speed limits need to be banned as well. I think Rosa Parks would have wanted us to blast through residential neighborhoods. Nothing says freedom like white knuckling it through a school zone with the gas pedal to the floor. Also, I only feel comfortable when I have a running chainsaw with me. Some people have a therapy dog. Well, I have a therapy chainsaw, yet apparently I can't take my running therapy chainsaw into Target. I don't know. I didn't know this was Soviet Russia. I thought it was America, the shame. I don't know about you, but true freedom means having zero responsibility towards your neighbors and colleagues. Isn't that what the America that we all want? Isn't that the America our founders envisioned? One free of inconvenience and consequence and the need to understand basic historical concepts. As the great Patrick Henry said, give me liberty and if that causes your death, too bad. It's my right to cough maskless in public places during a pandemic. The next speaker is Carrie and David Carter. It has come to my attention that Temecula City Council where I reside is not valuing our Christ-centered and conservative values and is targeting those who have such values. Please see below for items in which I would like you to address. Stop the required training of the ready commission. Do away with the expense of the ready commission and eliminate it. The citizens of Temecula do not want this and did not vote for the ready commission. Immediately eliminate the mask wearing in Temecula. If people want to wear a mask, great. There is no science or evidence that masks stops the transmission of diseases. They are harmful. Keep all businesses open with no restricted capacity requirements. Respect Jessica Alexander as our elected official and discourage the rhetoric that she is culturally insensitive. She has the Christ-centered and conservative values we voted for. We love our community and all people. The inference and outright statements that we are not inclusive and that we are racist is hurtful and not true. Stop this behavior and messaging. Discourage it. Embrace Jessica and the citizens that elected her to office of Temecula City Council. She and we strive to engage and make better struggles, make better the struggles, trials and tribulations of citizens and people within our community. We are people of love and care for all citizens of our beautiful Temecula. The next speaker is Tim McDonald.
I, Tim McDonald, have been a part of this city for over thirty years. I was born here, grew up here, went to school here, worked here for most of my adult life and bought a house here. There are only a handful of people here today that have as deep of roots in this city as I do. I understand and recognize there are at least a couple of members on this council that can make these claims as well. As a long-term resident, I like to celebrate our achievements as I am sure you do. I feel them very deeply as the city played such a big role in who I am today. I was so pleased to hear that the city was one of the first in the area to pass a unanimous resolution to condemn racism as well as create one of the first diversity committees in this state. At the time, I thought to myself, finally, Temecula is taking a step in the right direction. Because what I have witnessed over the course of thirty-plus years I have resided in Temecula are some glaring issues regarding race, equity and inclusion. As an elementary student at one of our city's oldest schools, I saw students repeatedly called racial slurs or be made fun of because of the color of their skin. In high school, I saw students carve squasticas into dust and threaten the lives of my black classmates. As an adult, I worked for prominent business owners in this city that actively would not hire employees based on their race or ethnicity. I have friends that have moved out of town and are wary to come to Temecula for a night of dinner or drinks because of the traumatic experiences they have been through here in the past and they're afraid of reliving those nightmares. I constantly see my friends and colleagues being treated unfairly or not given the same opportunities as others because of the color of their skin in this very city. What is even sadder is that I rarely see people in power such as teachers, managers or community leaders stand up when they see something wrong. On June sixth, it was a breath of fresh air to see so many members of our city leadership attend a workshop on race equity and inclusion. Your willingness to be vulnerable and admit that there is always more to learn will not go unnoticed. What was noticed though was the absence of one member of this council from that workshop, Councilwoman Jessica Alexander. It does not seem to be a coincidence either. A week after missing the meeting on race equity and diversity, she makes national news for racially insensitive comments. Though Councilwoman Alexander's actions are not as direct or transparent as the ones I mentioned earlier, it seems as though a clear pattern is beginning to form. Mayor Edwards, you have recently mentioned and provided commentary on the MLK Jr. Quote, "The ultimate tragedy is not the oppression and cruelty of the bad people, but the silence over that by the good people." It is time for you all to truly do the right thing and stand up and unify against Jessica's actions and words. Your silence on the matter is truly an embarrassment to our city and until you stand up and do something, it will likely continue to plague our town. You have participated in the workshops and have spoken on how this behavior should not be tolerated. Now is the time to stand up and do something. Once again, I am not some outsider trying to fan the flames. I am someone that has lived here as long as any member of this council who wants you all to stand up and take action against someone who is showing a pattern of racial insensitivity. The negative media will not disappear until the city acts against its deep-rooted problem.
That's the three minutes. The next speaker is actually this was. The next speaker is Renisha Day. My name is Renisha Day. I lived, worked and went to school in the Temecula Valley. I am also a member of Temecula Unity. First of all, I would like to commend the four members of the city council that attended the diversity training on April sixth. Your actions let me and other residents of color know that you are committed to knowing better, to do better. You have my thanks. Once again, I am saddened to see Temecula on the news for utter nonsense. As I said during the unity in the community event held last summer, Temecula has a reputation to people of color and it is not a positive one. I was appalled and angered to hear Councilwoman Jessica Alexander's insidious remarks during April thirteenth meeting. Perhaps she skipped on the day they covered the civil rights movement in school, not unlike how she skipped the diversity training she clearly needs. But I would like to set a few things straight. As an elected official who prides herself on serving her constituents, Councilwoman Alexander certainly uses the word I a lot. I cannot, I will not. The focus should be more on the nearly five thousand Riverside County residents who lost their battles to COVID and the prevention of any more deaths. Not throwing a temper tantrum about having to wear a mask. No one likes wearing masks. You know what doesn't? You know what doesn't care about anyone's feelings about that COVID nineteen. Rosa Parks never moved from the back of the bus to the front. She refused to give up her seat at the back of the bus to a white man. If you are going to co-opt a civil rights leader's defining moment in history to make a painfully terrible metaphor, at least do the research and get the story correct in the first place. Speaking of poorly planned uses of figurative language, as an English teacher, I would also like to point out that a nationwide mandate to wear masks for the health of your fellow countrymen is in no way, shape or form comparable to the dehumanization, subjugation and oppression of an entire racial group, full stop. I am calling on Councilwoman Alexander to apologize to the members of the community whom she hurt with her racially insensitive remarks and to commit to ongoing diversity training. If she is unwilling to do these things to make amends, then it is clear she has no place in public office and needs to resign. I hope she will take the positive road and decide to grow and be better. The next speaker is Lee Follinsby. Cease raising income levels of the city staff. Many of them make ridiculous amounts of money as it is. The city manager is way overpaid. The next speaker is James Lovardi. I'm writing this letter regarding recent comments you made during a city council discussion about whether or not council ought to continue to meet virtually in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Your comments were that you cannot and will not wear a mask. This letter is not intended to be a personal attack, but one of constructive criticism. While there are a number of issues to discuss regarding your comments such as historical accuracy and appropriate comparisons, I will focus on the rights and responsibilities of citizens in our democracy. The relationship between the two and how your comments fit into the conversation. It starts with the premise that for every right, there is or corresponding responsibilities. To illustrate my point, we all have a right to drive our cars, but it is not an utter pettered right. As you know, we must obtain a license by meeting certain criteria, including passing a written test and registering our vehicle with the DMV. Additionally, we have to obey traffic laws and drive within the speed limits and maintain our car so that it is safe to drive. So our right to drive is truly there, but it comes with duties and responsibilities for the safety of oneself and for all, in other words, for the common good. The same is true with wearing a mask under certain conditions during this pandemic. Wearing a mask provides for the safety of the wearer and for others, again, for the common good. Refusing to wear a mask is like saying I cannot and will not follow traffic regulations. In my opinion, today in our country, there is a great deal of focus on rights and liberties and not enough focus on responsibilities and duties that accompany them. Hopefully this will change. There is something else inherent in the relationship between rights and responsibilities and that is selfishness and care for others. We all have the privilege of exercising our rights as long as in exercising them, we don't infringe upon the rights of others such as driving one's car the way one wants, disregarding the rights and safety of others or not wearing a mask resulting in hurting others, in other words, for the common good. At the start of this letter, I stated this is not a personal attack and it is not. I truly believe you are not a selfish person. How could you be having been a Marine and a police officer? I certainly have a soft spot in my heart for Marines who helped me out more than once under dire circumstances. Some decisions, however, can give people the wrong impression. I would hope that you not only reconsider your statements, but possibly look but possibly the way you look at rights, liberties and responsibilities in our democracy. The next speaker is Mark Lane. I am a three-year resident of the city of Temecula in the Rancho Highlands community. I have come to enjoy living in the city and up until COVID would have recommended it as a conservative place to live and enjoy. Recently, however, I have been made aware of a couple of positions adopted by the city council that are contrary to these conservative values. This includes diversity training required by a commission formed unilaterally by the city council that I, we, the residents of Temecula, were not part of forming. I would like to know why the commission was formed and for what purpose. That information should have been communicated upfront to all citizens of the city of Temecula in order for us to have the opportunity to discuss the intentions and ramifications of such training. As I understand this training as mandatory, this is certainly an elimination of certain liberties, is it not? I certainly did not elect council members who would deny the liberty of opting out of this training. This includes a mandate to wear a mask in city council meetings. Let this be a choice, not a requirement, as there have been zero peer review studies that say masks are effective in preventing the spread of COVID. In fact, just recently, a Stanford University peer-reviewed study claims the opposite. Information such as this is critically important before draconian measures such as mask wearing and social distancing are instituted furthermore to attack one of your fellow council members and accuse them of racial insensitivity because she is taking a stand as Rosa Parks took a stand to not wear a mask is absolutely unacceptable. Racially insensitive, do you realize how absurd that sounds? Would you say the same if she was a person of color? As elected officials, I expect that due diligence is performed and that actions like these are agreed upon with the residents of the city before implementation. Finally, with respect to due diligence, there is evidence that the BIPOC Community Organization of Temecula has ties to the Black Lives Matter Movement Corporation. I would expect that through your due diligence, you know that the BLM movement is a Marcus movement is a Marcus organization that aims to defund the police and attack core family values. These are American values that should not be compromised, so I strongly question your support of such a movement. US city council members must take a stand against this type of doctrine as it only serves to perpetuate the hate you appear to abhor. As a resident of this city, I do not agree with the stance you've taken on these issues and strongly urge you to immediately stop the required training of the ready commission. Do away with the expense of the ready commission and eliminate it. Immediately eliminate the edict of mask wearing in Temecula and let people choose for themselves whether to wear one or not. And finally, respect the wishes of conservative council members who have been elected for their values and Christian beliefs without shaming and name-calling we have heard as recently as yesterday in the mainstream media. The next speaker is Marcia Blackman. No raise for Aaron Adams. The next speaker is Kurt Schaefer. Please justify any raises before approving them. The next speaker is Colleen Candace. I'm a twenty-three-year resident in Temecula and would like to take this opportunity to address the Temecula City Council on a recent issue about which I feel strongly. First recent council comments, first recent comments by Councilmember Jessica Alexander comparing her refusal to wear a mask to Rosa Parks brave actions on the bus in Montgomery, Alabama that day in nineteen fifty-five are misguided and insensitive. Pretending to identify with the enormous daily struggle of people of color in this country by Alex, by Mrs. Alexander belies her lack of knowledge of history of the civil rights movement and the nuances of inclusivity and clearly shows her lack of qualifications to sit on a city council. Apparently Ms. Alexander chose to skip the diversity training that she most desperately needs. Secondly, refusing to wear a mask in situations where CDC recommends to do so shows a cavalier attitude towards the health and safety of our fellow citizens. Her vocal refusal sets a poor example for others in a time in which we are all suffering from the repercussions of a global pandemic. City council members should represent all citizens of Temecula, have a working understanding and sensitivity to equity and set a good example for public health. I call for Ms. Alexander to receive the diversity and equity training so that she will better understand and serve all the residents of Temecula. Uh, this is an identical comment that was read before by Denise Taylor in regarding stopping the required training of the ready commission and and serving as a model community for other communities. We will include this in the duplicate. The next comment is by Ms. Miller. I would be much more worried about Jessica Black's voting for development on small projects like Los Los Hacienda seventy-seven apartments and overcrowding Temecula than her disconnection of unrelated agendas and valued historical actions such as Rosa Parks moving equity forward. She hasn't come into this overcrowded, overdeveloped water draining crime increasing polluted traffic generating sprawling bedroom town and done anything to pull projects off the plans. Reform the general plan that is allowing forty more apartment complexes and secure a moratorium against any more building. Some people think there is a housing crisis, which is a developer invented phrase. Phrase. There is no housing crisis. There is too many people desiring to live in Southern California and it is affecting the weather from paving over the nature and concentrating fumes from fossil fuel vehicles. There is way too much covering over a valued open spaces that house the endangered animals, absorb floods, sequester heat. People here seem to spend much too much time traveling somewhere else and disturbing the philosophy of live where you work. Many people wish to weigh in on a remark that needs explanation more than if they wake up to the premature earth rumbling because more heavy buildings will be moved onto converging earthquake faults in Riverside County. We need your time spent on saving Temecula from the unkept promises and inability to retain natural open spaces because developers can't create open land. If you want to redeem yourself, Ms. Black, then get in this council and shut down the attack of multi-unit housing on Temecula or any housing or malls or gas stations or any more of anything. People will find housing from the homes they left back eastern states they haven't lived in yet. If we continue overheating the West Coast, we will continue to have blizzards and tornadoes and hurricanes on the warming Gulf of Mexico, Pacific and Atlantic. And it, I think she meant Atlantic, it says Atlanta. And instead of complaining about masks and comfort zone, she should honor, she should be honoring the heroes of those who are helping the American consciousness to mature in equity. We've got four more, Madam Mayor. The next speaker is Skylar Temple. I feel that many other residents have already made excellent comments about Councilmember Alexander's comments and actions, so my comments will be limited on her Rosa Parks comment. Simply put, equating your public health concern to a monumental civil rights action is unconscionable. Councilmember Alexander's words were not being used as an inspiration, rather a false equivalency and an attempt to appear justified in her cause. I will no longer be kind on the subject of Councilmember Alexander. After receiving nearly fifty thousand dollars of support from the Riverside Sheriff's Union and sending mailers that darken the skin of her African-American opponent, it's clear to me that Councilmember Alexander has no interest in diversity and equity education. It's also clear to me that Councilmember Alexander has no business continuing to serve on the Temecula City Council. Councilmember Alexander does not put in the work nor the time needed to effectively serve her residents. Councilmember Alexander may also be in violation of the Brown Act and other open government laws. Councilmember Alexander has yet to file her Form seven, Form seven hundred, a form that allows the public to be aware of any potential conflicts of interest relating to finances or real property. Every other council member has filed this form and continues to file annually. To the rest of council, I recommend a full censure of your colleague for her behavior and inaction to represent her constituents. Councilmember Alexander has proven by not disclosing her financial interests that any vote she takes may be a vote to enrich herself. This is a danger to all of Temecula. My last comment is for everyone watching this meeting. Thank you to everyone standing up to denounce and call out Councilmember Alexander. To everyone still defending her, why, why do you choose to defend someone in this only for themselves? Why do you defend someone who, when given the opportunity, has used her position to inject?
who, when given the opportunity, has used her position to inject hatred and fear into our community? Temecula forgives when you are remorseful and set themselves on paths to improve. Temecula will never forget perpetrators that abused the power we, the people, granted to them. My family has lived in Temecula for over 27 years and I've never had to call for the resignation of a council member until now. Councilmember Alexander is a disgrace to our community. Resign. Your time is up. The next comment is Terry Wells. It is imperative that Jessica Alexander be removed from the Temecula City Council. She is in common parlance, a Karen, and demonstrated this by whining about wearing a mask and comparing herself to the great Rosa Parks. Ms. Alexander, your comparison is simply delusional. This privileged white woman is no Rosa Parks. She is an embarrassment to the entire Temecula Valley and to the nation. Her comments were so egregious that they made national news. Councilmembers, I implore you to step up to the plate and publicly denounce Jessica Alexander and remove her from office. Demonstrate to the citizens of Temecula Valley and to the nation that our beautiful wine country will not tolerate bigots. The next speaker is Terry Wells. Oh, actually, this was the, the second part of that. Jessica Alexander has sullied the reputation of our beautiful Temecula Valley by comparing herself to Rosa Parks. We need to show that Temecula Valley does not tolerate her whiny, ignorant behavior. Please vote to remove Ms. Alexander from office. And the last comment is by Vic McDowell. I'm a 62-year-old retired police detective that grew up in South LA. My dad, the grandson of a slave, and my uncles joined the military during World War II to help defend the world against the Nazi threat. My dad and uncles were forced to serve and wait on white soldiers and were not allowed to participate in combat duty. Jessica Alexander has absolutely no idea of the struggles of the civil rights movement. Her attempt to equate that struggle to mask-wearing is ridiculous and extremely insensitive. I believe Councilwoman Alexander should take an open-minded approach to the diversity training and the commission. How does her refusal to do either benefit the people of Temecula, benefit the people of Temecula? Madam Mayor, that is all of the comments.
Wow, that was a marathon. Thank you, Randy. Do you want to take a break now? No?
No, I'm, I'm good. At this point, I'm just going to go off screen for a bit.
Okay. Okay, since we moved these to the end, really, all we have left is adjournment. Does anybody want to make a comment before we adjourn?
Actually, the time for council comments has passed. You've all commented on the comments.
Oh, that's true.
Doesn't allow you to take the next step and get into a discussion of these items.
Okay, thanks, Peter. So.
Adjournment.
I, oh, what, Erin?
I just wanted to remind you, oh, there they are. So.
Yeah, I have it. I have it in my hand too. So, um, let me do this. You know, you see on the screen here, really, a legend in Temecula and part of the Pachanga family. Bruce, Patrick Bruce, Bruce, Patrick Murphy Jr. passed away. Let's see if they gave us the date. Well, the memorial is going to be held. Let me just say this.
Madam Mayor, it was last week.
Yeah, I was going to say it's passed already, but it's never too late to remember someone who made such tremendous contributions. I read the list of his involvement on behalf of the tribe, you know, all the way up to the national level. It was incredible, everything that he did for the Pachanga people. And he was instrumental also in the development of the entire casino, hotel and spa complex. So we just want to send a word to the Pachanga tribe and say that the heart of the city is with you. Several of us had the honor of working with Patrick over the years and found him to just be a delight and you know, a wonderful representative for the tribe. So on behalf of the city of Temecula, we want to share that sentiment with you, and we're going to adjourn the meeting in his name as well as another dear friend of the city of Temecula and Temecula residents, Bruce Cripe. Really, it's hard to describe him other than to say he was on top of everything, involved in everything. He was delightful, positive. He had a can-do spirit. He is the person who would jump in at the last minute if you needed somebody to do whatever. And Bruce would be the one to come in and bail you out. He was a very, very active member of Rotary, past president of the Temecula Rotary Club, which is, you know, my club. I'm honored to be associated with that club. He was, you know, active with Susan G. Komen for years, helping to organize the Race for the Cure, which was a tremendously huge event. I could go on and on about all the things that Bruce did, but he was one of those people who didn't really look for compliments or want to take credit for anything that he did. He was a humble, while energetic and enthusiastic, he was a very humble community servant, and he will truly be missed. So we would like to remember also Bruce Cripe. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Patrick Murphy Jr. and of Bruce Cripe. And stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Randy.